27th Wednesday, it is 6:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. And before, I have some public comment cards here, actually establishment of quorum, Ms. Cavallaro.
President Householder?
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis. Trustee Hack.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Cavallaro. And I was just talking to some folks up here. This is our first meeting in person in 20 months. And so I ask that we not only give grace and be kind to one another, but ourselves as well. Because this is very new and both of the board members to my left and right, they, this is their first in-person meeting and it's my first in-person meeting as board president. So, and with that, we have one closed session item and it's Public Employee Performance Evaluation Superintendent. I'm going to go to, we have a couple of public comment cards. And then if you folks want to put in a comment, there's a little box on the side here. Ms. Cavallaro will pass it up to me. Alright, so first up, we have Crystal Van Dyk. No, you're all good. And then Jake and then Velma. That's just the order.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Anello and all in attendance. My name is Crystal Van Dyk. I'm a teacher at Mission Elementary and the current AUSD teacher of the year. First of all, I'd like to say how glad I am to see everyone back in person. I'm here to speak tonight in support of a glowing recommendation, a glowing evaluation of our superintendent. Stephanie Anello has done nothing but positive things for our district. In the years that Stephanie has been our superintendent, graduation rates have increased, reading and math scores have improved. And then through the entire past almost two years during this pandemic, she has been nothing but a strong leader. And even during the pandemic, reading and math scores increased per the data from our iReady program. And to be completely straightforward, she shouldn't even be evaluated on test scores. Because as any of us who know anything about education, you can't judge a student's success on one measure alone, nor can you on the success of a teacher, which teachers are never evaluated on test scores, nor should the superintendent. Test scores are not only biased, but they are just a snapshot of one day in a student's life. They do not show what the student had to go through that day or just how much progress they had made throughout the year. Stephanie is nothing but supportive of the students, staff and community in Antioch. She has proven this time and time again. I implore you to think about everything that she has done to positively affect our district and the students and teachers who are a part of it and give her anything but a glowing evaluation because she deserves nothing less. And what I really hope is that this item is to discuss and set the realistic smart goals that she is to work towards, which is what should have been done according to a previous meeting. Considering according to her contract, she is not to be evaluated until June 30th. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jake Van Dyk.
Hello. My name is Jake Van Dyk and I'm here to show my support of Superintendent Stephanie Anello. When the board goes into closed session, I would like you to ask yourself how you would like to be evaluated on your job performance. In my career, I have given and received many evaluations and the ones that have had the most impact have one thing in common. The thing that they have in common are they are based on my performance and on my performance alone. The things that I have had a direct effect on, be it positive or negative. So the thing that I would ask of all board trustees is to please evaluate Stephanie on the actions that she has taken since her last review and not just on test scores or a portion of our students that may have low test scores. There's so many more things that affect a student's test scores than what a superintendent can do on her own. Test scores are not the end-all, be-all of how a superintendent should be evaluated. I would then like you to think ahead and ask yourself what you would be doing to the district if you feel that Ms. Anello should not be our superintendent. This would probably bring a lawsuit against the district for wrongful termination that the district would have to pay for legal counsel to represent them in court. The district would also have to pay out a portion of the superintendent's salary if she was let go. Not to mention the reputation that this board would have for firing a superintendent. It is one superintendent a year. This would give this board a reputation that does not support good superintendents. It only supports those who think and act like them. This is not how a school board and a superintendent should work together. They need to work as one and have the same goal in mind, even if they don't agree with each other. In closing, I would like to say that I am scared at how this board is being run by a president that doesn't listen to our fellow trustees. She doesn't acknowledge her superintendent when she asks to speak. This does not show true leadership. I think it shows that you have a dictator in power.
Next up, we have Velma Wilson. I know some folks just walked in. So if you want to put in a public comment for a closed session item, then there's a box here on the side.
Good evening, AUSD board, superintendent and the thousands of staffs she manages, parents, students and community. We're back live, not Memorex. This is for all of the educators and primarily our illustrious superintendent. We're still standing better than we ever did. We're looking like cool survivors, cheering like little kids. We're still standing after all this time. We're picking up the pieces of our lives without this on our minds. I wanted to start with that to acknowledge and applaud each educator and district employee who has persevered through some of the toughest times in education under the leadership of Mrs. Stephanie Anello, now Cantando. I ask this here board and Stephanie a few questions that we, the public, want answered. Stephanie, has this board formally asked you to provide a self-assessment? Have you been provided with obtainable goals to support the policies and legislation that have put, that have put in place, that this board have put in place? Have they discussed these goals and reviewed your self-assessment to align with the goals? Well, I'm pretty sure I know the answers to these questions, which is an astounding no. So my question to the board president, Ms. Elizabeth Ellie Householder, why are we having this discussion? Ellie, what really have you done to support positive student outcomes? What policies and legislation has this here board, under your leadership, put in place to support goals you have set for Superintendent Anello to support positive student outcomes? Well, I know the answer to that question, none. So again, Ellie, what really have you done? Let me help you out. You have created further division. You have promoted unsafe learning environments by posting flights from between students on social media, your social media. You have protested culturally relevant events because you were unclear of the purpose. You hang and support those that seek to cause mayhem like protesting at the former chief of police retirement party where your friend crowded me and one of them kicked me in my bad knee, but guess what? I'm still standing. I, I need every educator, student, parent and community member to stand with me with one loud voice asking, Ellie, what really have you done? Yes, to all you other educators and everyone out here, you are recognized. Ellie, you have tainted the sanctity of being board president. Your leadership style sucks and you need to step down. By the way, I saved the message you left me some, some time ago. Ooh, you blessed. Oh, you blessed.
Ms. Cavallaro, did we get any more?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, are we done with the closed session?
I just wanted to see if we had any more public comments that were submitted?
If not, I'd like to be recognized.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cavallaro.
Okay, at this point, I would like to table this closed session. I need a second for it and there's reasons for it that I don't have to explain at this point.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And the motion on the table is to table the closed session item?
Exactly.
Okay.
I'm ready for the vote.
Alright. Yeah, we, well, discussion, yeah. It's mostly got to be question oriented, but we have 15 minutes we can discuss this, yes?
So can we have sort of understanding of why, so that means?
Under a table, you don't have to.
We don't have to.
So I'm just telling you, I have the answer, but at this point, I think we should just go ahead and go for the vote.
Um, Ms. Cavallaro, or wait, I'm just sorry, I'm realizing you guys aren't in front of my face. Are there any questions on this side?
Um, yeah, I did have a slight potential point of order. Are we tabling this or are we postponing it?
No, we're tabling it.
So this is to not come back to us?
Not to come back.
Okay.
And if you have, if you really want the answer to it, we have on 12E, a selection of a trainer. And why should we be doing closed session evaluation when we haven't had the training to do it? And that's why I'm doing, asking for a table.
So from understanding, the table would be for us to then meet with the consultant or trainer?
Whatever you decide down in 12E.
Yeah, and it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a tough one just because it is closed session. So, um, you know, it's very limited in what we can discuss. But if there are no other questions, Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the vote?
One more question. So just so I'm clear, we will table it with the understanding that 12E, who, I'm sorry, we're tabling it because 12E mirrors the conversation.
Correct. I do think it's important to...
I did not, I did not hear what you said. So I asked whether...
I think you need to leave me, yes.
That might help, right? Uh, so I asked whether we were tabling it because the conversation in closed session would mirror that conversation that was supposed to happen in 12E. Which is, you know, uh, the, yeah, so 12E.
Consultant.
Consultant.
Yeah, so I, what I will say is that they are different. Um, and so, yeah, they, there, there's two separate kind of, uh, those are two entirely separate things. And so, um, after consulting with our district attorney, this is what he had suggested to put on the, um, closed session and it's kind of a catch-all term. Um, but I also, you know, I don't...
Yeah, Madam Chair, regardless of what you're saying, I'm still tabling it?
Yeah.
And if you please take the vote?
Yeah. Ms. Cavallaro.
Trustee Hack.
I voted table it.
Trustee Hernandez.
No.
President Householder.
No.
Vice President Lewis.
No.
Trustee Rocha.
Yes.
The motion to table does not pass three to two.
Thank you, Ms. Cavallaro. And so now we are going to break for the next 40 minutes or so and we'll come back at seven o'clock to re-establish our quorum.
I call this meeting back to order since coming back from our closed session. It is 7:16 PM. If Ms. Cavalero could reestablish our quorum.
Yes, President Householder.
Here.
Vice President Lewis.
Here.
Trustee Hack.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Rocha.
Here. We have a quorum.
All right, and then next up we have flag salute, and I guess we all get to say it now, and it's not gonna be weird, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, next up, item, or Part C.
President, point of order. Aren't you supposed to report out of a closed session?
Um, they're on our agenda. We don't have to report out from closed session, but there's no reportable action, so. All right, next up, Item C, approval of our minutes from June 23rd, 2021. So I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I so move.
Motion made by Trustee Dr. Lewis, seconded by Trustee Rocha to accept these minutes. So if Ms. Cavalero can call the roll.
Trustee Hack.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
President Householder.
Yes.
Vice President Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Rocha.
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes for the June 23rd, 2021 meeting passes 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalero. Next up, Item D, approval of our Board Minutes of the Board of Education meeting for August 11th, 2021. So is there a motion on this?
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll say seconded by Trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Hack.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
President Householder.
Yes.
Vice President Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Rocha.
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of August 11th, 2021 passes 5-0.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on, Section 4. Our first one up is Superintendent Report. So Ms. Anoah?
Yes, good evening. I just want to say welcome back. We have a long agenda, and I know that we reconvened at a late start, so I'll go ahead and just include the comments I was going to make this evening, uh, next evening. Thank you.
All right, and then next up, we have our adopted resolutions for the month of November. So first up, we have Native American Heritage Month. Um, so I will be reading this. So Native American Heritage Month, November 2021. Whereas this country was home to generations of Native peoples long before the arrival of European explorers, and each of these tribes had a unique and vibrant culture as well as a system of social order. And whereas the European settlers were aided in their survival by teachings of this country's first inhabitants and the contributions of Native Americans to this nation's government, history, and culture are numerous and varied as the tribes themselves. And whereas each tribe has celebrated heroes of its own in such many and varied fields as government, education, visual and performing arts, literature, engineering, medicine, and environmental science. And whereas the American culture has been greatly influenced by these, by the customs and traditions of Native peoples and their close relationship to the earth and all its inhabitants. And whereas the California State Board of Education recognizes in its policy statement on multicultural education that the student needs an opportunity to understand the common humanity underlying all people, to develop pride in his or her own identity, and to understand, respect, and accept the identity and heritage of others. And whereas California Education Code, Section 51204.5 specifically calls for instruction in the social sciences to include the study of the role and contributions of Native Americans to the economic, political, and social development of California and the nation, with particular emphasis on portraying the role of Native Americans in contemporary society. And whereas the historical social framework for California Public Schools, kindergarten through grade 12, states that the history curriculum of community, state, region, nation, and world must reflect the experiences of men and women of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups, and must be integrated at every level. Now therefore be it resolved that the Antioch Unified School District recognizes the month of November 2021 as Native American Heritage Month. Be it further resolved that this resolution is distributed to every school site in the district, and that was passed and adopted on the 25th day of August 2021. So I believe I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Lewis.
Uh, so I'll be reading the California Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month, which is November 2021. Whereas California and our nation are once blessed and enriched by the unparalleled diversity of our residents. And whereas Sikh who originated in Punjab, India, first entered California in 1899 through the Angel Island Immigration Station in San Francisco, California. And whereas the Sikh pioneer initially worked on railroad construction projects and in lumberbills. And whereas by 1910, these pioneers turned to farming in Sacramento, San Joaquin, and Imperial Valley. And whereas Sikhs have also excelled in security services and transportation services to doctors, attorneys, engineers, teachers, and small business owners, and in other notable capacities. And whereas legislation to authorize Sikh and other East Indian immigrants to naturalize as United States citizens was not enacted until 1946. And whereas Sikh history and culture is represented in the Asian Art Museum of San Francisco, in the Smithsonian Museum in Washington DC, in the Community Memorial Museum of Sutter County, and in the Museum of the Stockton Sikh Temple. And whereas Sikh Americans throughout California celebrate the coronation of Sikh scripture and other Sikh festivals at the Guadaz, please forgive me if I mispronounced, and through parades in cities across California, United States. And whereas November 12th, 2021 is the 52nd, 552nd birth anniversary of the first 10 Gurus and founder of Sikhism, Guru Nanak. This day is celebrated by Sikhs in California and worldwide as Guru Nanak Gurparab, again, forgive me if I mispronounced, and is one of the most important dates in the Sikh calendar. And whereas due to ignorance and hate, Sikhs have been the subject of hate crimes because of their articles of faith, including a turban and beard, which represent the Sikh religious commitment to justice, equality, and dignity for all. And whereas the faithful service of the Sikh American community to this state and community merits appreciation as an integral thread in the fabric of American plurality. Now therefore be it resolved that Antioch Unified School District recognizes the month of November 2021 as California Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month. Be it further resolved that this resolution be distributed to every school in the district. This resolution was passed and adopted on the 25th day of August 2021.
Well, thank you so much for that. All right, moving along, we have school reports. So we have Fremont Elementary School. So Ms. Sylvia Ramirez, hello.
Good evening, Board President Householder, members of the Board, Superintendent Anello, and members of Cabinet. My name is Sylvia Ramirez, and I'm the very proud principal of Fremont Elementary School. Our school's mission and vision is aligned to that of our district, as we know that our responsibility is to prepare every student for success in college, career, and life. We value the history of our school and our community. We support the growth of our students, and our goal is to aid them in being productive and well-informed citizens. We are a dual immersion school, and in my presentation, all of our titles are both in Spanish and in English. And I'd like to start with El Corazon, the heart of our school. Here we have a picture of our classified staff. And this presentation will provide you with a glimpse of the work that is done at our school. Every day, our students and families are greeted with a smile by our wonderful staff, El Corazon, and the heart of our school. These men and women have ensured a safe and welcoming environment each and every day for our students. Their dedication is like no other. This is our certificated staff, and I apologize for not having our entire staff there, but these are some of the pictures that I was able to collect. I must recognize the hard work of all of my teachers, my school counselor, and my vice principal these past two years. These individuals come to work with an open heart and a willingness to support each student, and most importantly, each other. They are hardworking individuals that are committed. We have planned together. We have collaborated together. We have disaggregated data together. We hold IEP meetings, 504 meetings, CARE team meetings, SST meetings, and we do all that we can for our school community. And now our students, nuestros alumnos. Our student body is comprised of 400 students. Our students come from various backgrounds, and our data shows that the majority of our students are Latino and African-American with a small population of white students. Our students come from very needy backgrounds. Most come from homes that are socio-economically disadvantaged, and 97% of our students receive free and reduced lunch. Many of our students come to us with social-emotional needs, but despite of all of these things that they face, they are very resilient. They face their challenges each day and come to school. School is a safe place for them, and they like to be there. Here are pictures of our students at recess, at lunch, entering and leaving campus. And we also celebrate their accomplishments. This year, we, oops, sorry, that's a video. This year, we focused our first month of school on building a classroom and school community. We focused on building relationships. In September, we also had our goal-setting conferences with our parents to establish that early relationship with them and to get to know them, and talk about their students' personal and academic goals. We also have done many home visits. We recognize our students for many things, including the following: attendance awards, Students of the Week, Students of the Month, Lunch with the Principal, positive phone calls home from the principal, positive tickets to use at our student store. We also have a student council, and we have buddy rooms for students to use. We celebrate each other, and we build a positive school environment. And now I'd like to show you a video of how we build that positive school environment.
Good afternoon, Fremont. We're here today in Room 23 with Mrs. Carvalho, fifth grader. And we are here to congratulate Mrs. Carvalho's fifth graders on the second month in a row of top attendance, perfect attendance award. Here you go, Mrs. Carvalho. Great job. Good job, fifth grader. Okay, very important. Attendance is very important. We are proud of you guys for showing up. You're showing a good example, setting a good example for all the kids here at Fremont. So keep up the great work. You're doing awesome. We're proud of you. Good job, Mrs. Carvalho.
And that's Benny the Bobcat, and I won't tell you who he is, because then the kids will find out. But we do recognize our teachers. And then the next one, Benny the Bobcat, is with our students. And Benny the Bobcat visits many classrooms, and this year it was kindergarten that he started with. So thank you, Benny the Bobcat. Next, I'd like to share about our dual immersion program, Immersion Dual, nuestro programa. Uh, this program has been supported by our, our school district. We follow the three pillars of dual immersion, which is to ensure that all students who are in this program come out bilingual and biliterate, that they achieve high academic standards in both English and en español, and also that they're socially-cultural competent when they come out. And so I'd like to share a video of Ms. Liliana Perez. She's a first-year teacher, teaching a second and third grade combo. And Ms. Perez is one of two teachers. We have a 50/50 model. Ms. Perez teaches the Spanish portion of the model, and then she has a co-teacher, Ms. Kay Kim, who teaches the English portion, and then the students switch teachers for the languages. And here, Ms. Bettis was teaching them a writing prompt about taking step one, step two, step three, and she gave examples of putting things and preparing for school and putting things in their backpack. And then they were going to write in that, I don't know if you can see in the back, but they have sentence starters for them to follow up with the writing example. And then we try to incorporate, or actually, we do incorporate Spanish in everything that we do. And so here is one of our students who is saying the pledge in Spanish, and that's part of our daily routine. Okay, and now el ambiente de aprendizaje, the learning environment. As you know, last year, we were in distance learning, and this year, being our first time back in school with students, we have had many challenges, but we do have a very resilient staff who loves each other, and they love to work alongside each other. And so we have successfully started teaching reading and writing and math and ELD and our new TWIG science. We also provide our students with support classes, especially since we know that many of our students came back to school with gaps in their learning. And so we provide them with an intervention period with a teacher. We also have reading specialists that help support them. We have our wonderful sped department with our resource teacher and our resource aide. And we also have four bilingual aides who support our ELD students throughout the day. We also want to make sure that our students are well-rounded, and so our students attend PE. We want to make that mind and body connection, and also realizing that being fit is part of our social-emotional well-being. And so we want to make sure that our students get that exercise and create healthy habits, especially those of walking, running, team-building, and most importantly, having fun. Our students attend music class. We have a wonderful music teacher, Mr. Dave Price, and he has 30-plus years in our district. So our students attend music class, and he also does instrumental lessons with our fifth graders, and everybody seems to be enjoying music this year. So thank you, Mr. Price. We have a wonderful bilingual counselor who is there with me, step by step. She is starting her first year there, and she has a full plate. She is helping us incorporate Second Step, which is our new social-emotional curriculum. And we incorporate Second Step in our morning announcements, teachers do it in their daily class lessons and class meetings, and also we send out our parent communication that informs them about Second Step. Our counselor is also responsible for PBIS, and she runs our PBIS committee. That's Positive Behavior Incentives and Support. So we really try to recognize students who are doing the right thing at school. And so we have pictures here of our school playground rules. We also have our attendance tracking board, where we have students who are in green, yellow, and red, and we follow them and we talk about them every week to make sure that we do everything that we can to get them to school. We also have our CARE team meetings to support all the needs of our students. Our counselor does individual counseling sessions with students. And school-wide, she does things such as anti-bullying campaigns, and this week, we are doing Red Ribbon Week. So she's helping us out with daily events that all students get to participate. And here, I have a quick video of our Second Step lesson, and I just wanted to show you a little bit about what Second Step is. And that's just a sample of one of the lessons. And as you can see, there are many skills that students learn throughout this song and throughout the lessons, and they get this every day in their classes. And the last thing that I wanted to talk about is that we have atención plena, or mindfulness. And here is our coach, Coach Sunny, and she also does presentations, whole class, and she also does small group mindfulness. And so she's been a great asset to our campus, and this is also another part of supporting our students with their social-emotional needs. And the last thing, and the one that I missed the most, is nuestros padres, our parents. Here we have La Señora Bean, Ms. Bean, who is our school site council president, and La Señora Espitia, and La Señora Santiago, La Señora Flores. These are all the parents that are involved in all of my parent committees, our ELAC, our school site council. And I also consider them to be my comadres, my friend. They support me in many other things. They actually are wanting to start our PTA again, so it makes me so proud of them. And so I can't wait till we can come back in person so I can really get to have them on campus and really be part of our school community. But I want to thank them from the bottom of our heart for everything that they do for us. And lastly, just muchas gracias, thank you for supporting us and for getting to know our school. And on this stick of gum, it says, "Thank you for always going the extra mile for our Fremont students." Thank you.
That was excellent. Thank you so much for that presentation. So do folks have questions or comments? I just have one question. Is the music teacher, are the extracurriculars or electives also in both languages? Or is it just like the primary classroom?
Correct, just the primary classroom. We're moving hopefully in that direction, but yes, right now, it's only the classroom.
So, you know, thank you for that presentation, and thank you for joining us tonight. You know, I can only imagine how busy your schedule is with returning to school and everything that's going on. I did have a question around the attendance data, like the attendance chart. You know, you have the three levels. Can you tell us about that chart and how students either move up or down?
Yes, so as I spoke about our CARE team, we meet weekly, and we look at students' attendance data. And so once students miss three or more days, they get their name on that wall. They start off on the green at the very bottom, and hopefully, they stay there. We hope that they don't move up in the chart. If they get to yellow or red, then we have to do home visits, and we need to make sure that we really follow up and making sure that those students get to school. So we try to do everything possible, sending our truancy letters, serving the students, taking them to SART, following all the steps to be able to engage parents. This year has been much better. Last year during distance learning, it was a little struggle. We couldn't find some of our students, and so we had the support of Student Support Services to help us out, and with them, we were able to engage some more families. But that's our way of having a visual reminder. We also include their pictures. So in that little index card, we have their pictures, we have all the information that we need to know about them, reasons why they're not coming to school. And then we really try to talk about them every week, and really get together as a team and try to problem solve, and try to create a resource bank of things that we can do within our control to be able to engage those kids back into school.
So if they're on red and they come back the next day, then they remove from the board, or do they go down to yellow?
Correct. Yes, 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 yes.
Other questions or comments? Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I used to do early literacy research on understanding like English and language, understanding. And one of the myths I ran into a lot when I talked to parents, both English and Spanish-speaking parents, is this idea that learning both languages at the same time, they'll get jumbled up, and they'll have trouble differentiating between the two. So I'd love, you know, to give you the opportunity to share any other myths you like to dispel about dual immersion, or maybe highlight some of the ways that you guys are doing a great job in shaping the way that people understand dual immersion, because I know that there's sometimes a lot of confusion about that.
Right. Yes, I agree. And language theories tell us that students at an early age are able to handle one, two, three languages, especially because their brain is developing. And so when we do presentations to families at the beginning of the school year and at the end of the school year to recruit students for the next year, we do a presentation, and in there, we talk about that. And we explain to parents that students start off in our program, a 50/50 program, and they will acquire the first language, which is Spanish. And then English will come along, because they're going to have that support at home. And so if we keep that distinction with English at home, Spanish at school, they don't get confused, and we will see their growth throughout the years. And we do ask parents to be committed, because one of the things about dual immersion is that they have to be in the program for at least the five years, so that you can see that transition of the students balancing both languages. So it is a commitment.
Awesome. Thank you so much for sharing, and this was a great presentation. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Rocha, trustee hack?
Just thank you for sharing, and I appreciate it. Fremont is a unique school and has some challenges, but also some very great successes also. I want to see David Price say hi to him, because I lost track of where he was.
I will, thank you. All right, thank you.
I think I was going to say that you've made a difference in that school, and I know that it's been turned around, and we have a good support from your families. And I'm excited to continue hearing the immersion program and how it's working, and I hope to visit.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. All right, have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we're moving to our public comment section. So again, for folks who just walked in, or for folks who might not know, if you want to put in a public comment, there's a box here on the side. And so we're going to start off with individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. And then what I'm going to actually do is I'll call up a name, and then I'll say the next person, just so you're kind of ready. We do have a very long agenda this evening. So first up, I have Melissa Case, and then next up after them, it'll be Lindsay Amazouka. So Melissa Case is up first. Going once. Oh, okay.
Hello, board members. First, I want to start off something very important. Congratulations on your marriage. So, second of all, I want to address you, Mr. Lewis. First, I want to apologize for my comments on your personal Facebook page. And I just want to recognize that I did it with a good heart, and I know I'm snarky and I miss your dad jokes. So I apologize to you privately, I want to do it publicly. So if you want to unblock me, we can be friends again, I promise not to do it again. Okay. My second thing to you, though, is you've heard it from me before. I'm going to put a little different spin on it. I think you're, you are a thinker, I think you acknowledge that, and I'm a doer. And it's good to have both. But as a doer, sometimes I should think before I do, and as a thinker, sometimes you need to do. I think you need to recall her off as president. I think you need to step up. So I've heard, not just me, I've heard so many teachers, so many parents beg you to step up and lead, and that's what we need, real leadership. We need it. I want it from you. I used to ask Antonio here to do it, either one of you, but you lied, and you haven't apologized to the community, and that pisses me off. Like, you've lost my trust, Antonio. I'm sure you've lost everyone else's trust, just from doing a stupid lie, a teenager lie. We can't have that as a leader. I was looking to you to lead as well. I'm not now. Who do we have as a leader right now? Rocha, thank you. Rocha, you've been leading. I'm glad to see you in person, not just at Lucky's. But I don't know if you're the right leader, because there's so much animosity, and you've been hurt physically by householders, friends, and I'm sorry for that. My heart goes out to you for that. I just don't know if you're the right leader, but you are a leader, and I really appreciate you for that. But this is just me pleading with you, Louis, that I am an Antioch High School graduate in 1988, woo-hoo, and I don't send my kids there for many reasons. Before, you guys were all board members. This has been going on for a long time, you know? So I want a leader. I live in Antioch, I work in Antioch, I sell homes in Antioch to parents, and I can't, I have to refer them to the board meeting. I don't want to do that anymore. I want a real leader, Mr. Lewis. I do, and I think you can be that person. And I'm imploring you right now, please, do an agenda item tonight, recalling her from, not recalling her, but I'm sorry, for having, stepping her down from president. I ain't recognizing her. I'm done with her. I don't think she's a good leader. I don't think you think she's a good leader. You told me to trust you. Let, show me I can.
All right, next up, we have Lindsay Amazouka, and then Velma Wilson.
Good evening, Superintendent Anello, Vice President Lewis, Trustee Hack, Trustee Hernandez, and Trustee Rocha. My name is Lindsay Amazouka, and I thank you for recognizing me tonight. On October 8th, 2021, at 4:41 PM, Ellie Householder was served with a notice to intent to circulate a recall petition. Over two dozen proponents made up almost entirely of AUSD parents and AUSD employees that come from all three of the AUSD unions, signed the notice, and are working together now to recall Ms. Householder. The decision to initiate the recall was not made lightly. We discussed the seriousness of taking this action for several months before we decided to act. It became apparent to us that the students of Antioch Unified School District were no longer the focus of the Board of Education, and drastic action was needed to correct the direction that we were headed. When the vote of no confidence from our three unions wasn't enough to get to the trustee removed, the trustees to remove Householder's president, we decided to start this process. AUSD needs a leader that wants to work with our educators to achieve our collective goals, a leader that is supportive, a leader that wants to affect change in a constructive manner. For those of you that are at home and would like to sign the petition tonight, we have it on hand. For a list of reasons why we initiated this recall, for locations to sign this petition in the future, or to offer your support both as a monetary or voluntary basis, please either visit www recalledillyhouseholder.com or our Facebook page, Recall Ellie Householder. Thank you for your time, and please remember, we are AUSD.
All right, next up, we have Velma Wilson. And then is that Ms. Cavalero, is that it for 6A? And then is that Ms. Cavalero, is that it for 6A?
Good evening, AUSD Board, Superintendent, District Staff, Principals, Teachers, Classified Staff, Students, Parents, Families and the entire community of Antioch. I am Velma Wilson, representing Velma Wilson. Yes, we're back. First, let me say congratulations to our beautiful and fierce superintendent and her new husband, Alan Cantando. She's married, y'all. Just a few upcoming events that you can all participate in, in Antioch Family Nights with the Warriors is back. Live at the Chase Center, November 5th, Healthcare Heroes Nights, seats are starting at 120 Bridge Level. November 12th, Hoops for the Troops Honoring Veterans, tickets are starting at 105 Upper Level. November 21st is Asian Heritage Night, starting at 115. Call 925-240-3703. All proceeds of these tickets, some go to the veterans and a lot of these are going back into our schools to support scholarships. Delta Veterans Group will host Veterans Day Celebration and Parade where we will bring back the Battle of the Bands. So far, we have Antioch High, Deer Valley, Liberty Marching Bands, Pendings, Pittsburgh and Heritage. This will be an amazing way to cheer on students from the local high schools. During the event, we will announce the 2021 Veterans of the Year, rededicate the Veterans Memorial, hear AUSD student speakers from elementary, middle and high school and so much more. Parade applications are still being accepted. Tomorrow, AUSD will host its third district-wide Black Student Union Meeting via Teams at 3 PM where students will engage in conversation about Black Innovation presented by Mr. Worley and Ms. Tasha Williams from Dallas Ranch. Thank you so much to the tireless effort of Ms. Essence Phillips, Director, for all of her work and support in bringing this to all students district-wide. Where your school board at? And to Superintendent and Associate Superintendent for their continued support of this work. Yes, she is doing the work. It's a new school year. Time to renew your PTA or PTSA membership. Go to ptaa dot one forward slash join and you can locate all AUSD schools that have active PTAs. Thank you to our Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent and Associate Superintendent for joining all of AUSD school PTAs and yes, I have your membership cards. Thank you to trustees Mary Rocha and Clyde Lewis for being members of AHS, PTSA, Lone Tree and Dallas Ranch PTSA. What a way to show students you really do care by giving back and supporting positive outcomes. Isn't that what you're elected to do? In closing, I challenge every parent, guardian, educator or community member to get involved and engaged with the real work that is going on in our schools. Don't believe the hype of this here president. I stand here this evening as a witness to the effort of our principals, vice principals, counselors, teaching staff, site safety and custodial staff.
Ms. Wilson, your time has expired. So next up, we have Lacey Brown. After that, we have...
Again, you blessed. You still blessed.
And then folks, if you guys, you know, just a happy reminder to wear your masks and there are masks in the back if you don't have one. So Lacey Brown and then I believe this says Patty Curves, I think. Are you ready? We're good.
No problem. Hello, everybody. Good evening. I wanted to come and my comment may shock a few of you by being possibly the most neutral of the evening. I am a parent of a school-aged child in this district. I'm also very nervous to come up here, but you know, I understand that we all have our political beliefs, we all have our personal beliefs, we might not all agree with one another or like one another, but at the end of the day, this is a school board and the fact that we need that many police officers outside of a school board meeting should tell you And I want to point out that I can't remember a time where I watched a school board meeting that a significant amount of time wasn't wasted, whether by board members or by people commenting, just aiming personal attacks at one another rather than focusing on children and programs and funding and the things that we are actually here to talk about. I know that personally, you know, we could aim missiles at one another all night. We could probably go into the wee hours of the morning, including people in the audience. But if you're wondering why there's such childish behavior, because I've heard it from a lot of you, why are these comments so nasty and childish and why are we all so focused on, you know, all of the personal drama? I want to direct yourselves to your mirrors because your behavior is what sets the tone for everybody sitting in this auditorium here. The reason that they feel so emboldened and we feel so emboldened is because number one, we always think that we are not part of the problem. We think it's everybody else. It's not me, it's everybody else. I'm in the right. But at the end of the day, the people that I'm surrounded with are an echo chamber for me, the people that they're surrounded with are an echo chamber for them and it's the same for you guys. Please, I'm just begging you to focus not on silencing one another or recalling one another or, you know, commenting back and forth on Facebook in little groups and stuff with one another. Focus back on our kids, focus back on our community, focus back on the awful test scores that we're looking at in our district. I am terrified for my daughter to grow up in this city for a multitude of reasons, but this school board is one of them. And I'm just hoping that all of us can realize that there's always going to be one side and the other. There's always going to be differing opinions. That doesn't make us right and it doesn't make personal attacks effective when it comes to our kids. Thanks.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Next up, we have Deborah Vinsong. Yeah, Deborah. No, you're okay. And then it looks like that's our last general public comment and so then we move on to
Good evening, board trustees and community members. I'm just here to talk about what it means to be a model example for children in your behaviors. I know that I've been watching and listening and can reflect that for the past seven years in this district, school board trustees have been bullied for no reason. So the other thing I would like to say is Ms. Ramirez gave a presentation on second steps, social emotional skills. And within that curriculum, there is something called perspective-taking. And I would encourage all of you to become familiar with some of the social emotional skills listed within the evidence-based second step curriculum. The other thing that I'm going to say is some of the antisocial behaviors that the staff throw and aim at some of the school board trustees is unacceptable. I know that someone applied for a position here and they sent me the guidelines posted, I think on maybe the website or on one of the job websites and it speaks about this school district not accepting intimidating, bullying, fighting, any type of behaviors that violates the rights of others. And they asked me, should I take the job? I said, absolutely take the job because the children need you and you can be a model example in this district of how to listen, how to get along and how to teach people how not to engage in bullying and intimidating, but to listen. So I don't think anything gets accomplished when you try to control and overtake someone else's person. I think it's unacceptable. I think it's violent. And because the behavior has gone on for so long, I don't think it's fair to suspend any student of color for the behaviors that the staff exhibit at these meetings. So I do want you to think about your actions, think about how you model yourselves in public and just understand that we're all different cultural, ethnic backgrounds, sexual identities, all different types of differences and the world is big enough to hold all of them. So I'm looking forward to you all coming together as a group and making some positive decisions for our children. Thank you.
All right, so we got another general public comment from Melissa Span. Moving on to section 6B. So, oh, sorry. Okay, perfect.
So my name is Melissa and I live here in the city. I've been here for about six years. I don't have a school-aged child at this time. My child graduated in 2017 despite the fact that we live here in Antioch. He went to school in Brentwood because at that time that we did our research, it was a much better option for him. Things in this district have to change. They have to change. And to me, from someone who's been drawn to watching these meetings because of all the drama surrounding what goes on in this board, one thing is very clear is that there's a division and that needs to change. You all elected, we all elected Ellie Householder here to the position of president and immediately have started jumping down her throat and not given her an opportunity to do anything. I have watched a number of meetings where she has been attacked, her family has been brought up, her years in high school have been brought up. None of that has anything to do with her ability to do her job. I've heard over and over again and all those nasty, disgusting, anonymous comments read...
Excuse you. Hey, you guys, I'm going to have to ask that if you're going to make those types of comments, you're going to leave. We're going to have to ask you to leave.
Anyway, I have watched those comments over and over and over and over again and the only thing that anyone can say is that she's immature. And that's a bunch of garbage because just because she is young does not have anything to do with her ability to do her job, given the opportunity. The infighting needs to stop. You guys need to have progress. I've watched a number of meetings and I've not seen anything but fighting. The mom who spoke previously, the last two ladies who spoke were exactly right. The focus needs to be on the kids, progressive changes to better the district and not trying to look back to what the status quo has been because the status quo has gotten us to the point where parents don't even want to send their kids to this district anymore. So something has to change and if no one else has any other options, opinions, thoughts about how to do that, then people need to be quiet, stop fighting and give President Householder an opportunity to do her job. That's it.
And then next up, we have Shagufa Khan. And I ask that please, the kind of side comments, if you're going to be cursing or saying negative things, we're going to have to ask you to leave. Everybody deserves the floor.
All right. Good evening, school board members, superintendent, assistant superintendent. My name is Shagufa Khan and I am a 2018 graduate from Doja Libby Medical High School. I'm a current senior at UC Berkeley, will be graduating next year. And I just wanted to come up to really talk about the division that we have here in our city. We have the far right and then we have the far left. And as Lacey mentioned, we are not focusing on the issues and the only person that I see who is bringing up the most important issues that address student needs and teacher needs is President Householder. A lot of you may say, oh yeah, I'm saying that because she's my friend. No. Well, okay, yeah, I am her friend, but the reason why is because she is an outstanding leader. She cares about the community members. She cares about students. For everyone who is watching, you have not seen the hard work that President Householder has been putting for not only the school board, but for the entire city. She cares about the betterment. You all need to just give her a chance. And Board Member Antonio Hernandez, you have also been doing an extraordinary job. I am telling you this by all the students that I'm in connection with. When they watch the school board meetings, they completely associate with you, President Householder and Antonio Hernandez. You both are young leaders who are needed in this community. We do not need the status quo anymore. The status quo has done nothing for this city. It's about the young changes that are needed here in the city of Antioch. Keep doing it. Let the haters hate. Continue being strong. We love you.
All right, and I just want to just make sure, did we get any more for 6A? All right, great. And then if folks can, you know, if there's something you want to talk about on the agenda, then please put in a comment for it and just note what number it is. So I'm going to be moving on now to 6B, which is individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. And this one has three names. It's Josh Eisenberger, Bob Carson and Scott Bergerhaus. And I don't have any other ones, so if you have a comment and your staff member, please.
Good evening, school board, Superintendent Nello and our community. I'm Josh Eisenberger. I'm the president of Antioch CSEH Chapter 85 and I have with me...
I'm Scott Bergerhaus, president of Antioch Management Association.
I'm Bob Carson. I'm a teacher in Antioch and I am the bargaining team chair.
A vote of no confidence is defined as a formal vote by which people indicate that they do not support a leader, government, et cetera. In an electronic secret ballot election held from September 18th through 22nd, 2021, 97.5% of the votes cast were in support of a vote of no confidence in Elliot Householder as the president of the AUSD school board. Only 15 votes were cast in opposition, representing only 0.02% of the total ballots cast. The breakdown of votes is as follows. 98.2% of certified staff, AEA, 97.8% of management staff, AMA, and 97.3% of classified staff, CSEA, stated their lack of confidence in the board president. The following violation of Roberts Rules of Order and the Brown Act have occurred at board meetings presided by President Ellie Householder. Allowing a substitute motion to go through on non-debatable motions such as a motion to table. Efforts to limit or eliminate public comment by removing agenda items without consensus of the board. Efforts to shorten public comment by reducing the time allowed after comments had been submitted. Stopping public comments midstream when she felt it wasn't appropriate or directly related to the agenda item. Requesting staff to use personal judgment on which public comments should be entered into the public records and which should be not. Abusing her presidential authority by not recognizing staff and board members' requests to speak or provide input during a public meeting. Asserting that the president must not only collaborate on, but approve the board agenda. Ed code and board policy do not require the board president's approval, just collaboration on the development. Abusing her authority by calling and/or adding agenda items at special meetings that were neither urgent nor necessary. Violating the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA, by publicly posting unauthorized video of students without permission. For all of these reasons, the employees of AUSD have no confidence in Ellie Householder's -- ability to lead the Antioch Unified School District. Thank you.
Ms. Cavalera, were there any more submitted? Were there any more comments submitted? Okay, yep, we have someone coming up right here. And this is for staff? Okay. You can just go up, just say what your name is. Or you don't have to.
So, my name's Lisa Gillum. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but I have to say, I would agree with you that this is about the kids, and I'd like to see us all come together. It's not this side or that side. It's about what we can do together as a group, as a team, as a community. And I would invite the board members to come out to our school sites, see what the issues are. Test scores show you a certain direction. See what we're facing. See how we can help each other. And I mean, like I said, I had nothing really planned, but I just, I have a hope for this board that we can try and work together. You know, work with the superintendent, work with the teachers, work with the district. Stop pointing fingers at each other. Like they said, it's sad that we have to have police cars outside. It's sad. You know, I live in a different community, but I've been in this district for 15 years, and I'm proud of this district. I'm proud of my school. But it's embarrassing when I go into a school or a grocery store and they go, oh, you work in Antioch, your school board's crazy. How could you even get anything done there? So it's embarrassing. Please step up, do your jobs, and support us at the school sites. Thank you.
Alrighty, so that concludes, I believe, our public comment, yep, our public comment. Thank you, Ms. Cavalera, for checking on that. So next up, we have district reports. We actually have two this evening. So the first up is our COVID-related policies and procedures. So these are just reports. I'm not sure...
Are you gonna take that, Ms. Romeo?
So Ms. Jessica Romeo.
This evening, it's gonna actually be a tag team with Director Lindsay Wisely as well, but the board had asked for an update on some of the mitigation strategies and different issues that we're doing around COVID-19. So I wanted to share a little bit of that. Joe, if you can move forward. Yeah, Lindsay has it. Okay, so some of the items that we have in place for personal, you know, PPE and COVID mitigation, we do have masks and/or face shields available for all of our staff and students, and those have been provided at every school. We do have a team that does daily disinfecting besides our regular custodian work. We have brought in a team that goes through and does a disinfecting on all of our sites with sprayers that we have purchased to allow us to do that disinfecting each evening in addition to the regular cleaning that our staff is already doing. I have to give a big shout out to our M&amp;O department because they have done a significant amount of work around this to make sure that our students and staff are safe. We have provided air filters that meet the guidelines in all of our schools, as well as provided air purifiers in every classroom that it is requested, as well in any offices where they have requested them. We've purchased hand sanitizer dispensers that are in all of our hallways, all of our classrooms where we may not have sinks, and areas as people walk in the door similar to what you would see in a grocery store. We have placed Plexiglas as we start to invite our public back into the offices so that there is a barrier between our staff and the community that comes in, so that they also can be served in the offices, especially as the cold's coming through. We always had it at the front door, but now we are opening up those schools. As well as having student wellness rooms so that if there is a child that's not feeling well or showing symptoms, we have a place to place and work with that child while we are calling the parents to come home. There are many other strategies in place, but these are just a few that I wanted to Ms. Wisely's gonna talk a little bit about our contact tracing.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Romeo, and thank you, Board, for having me, and thank you, Superintendent Anello. I want to talk about the work that our schools have been doing. They've done an incredible amount of work with contact tracing, our school offices, our office assistants, our principals, vice principals have all been working together to make sure that we have robust contact tracing. We're working very hard to make sure we get notifications out to students and staff, that we're being as safe as we can in terms of giving the correct advice for isolation and quarantine that's been outlined by the California Department of Public Health. We've worked, the teachers have worked incredibly hard on their independent study packets, so when students do need to go out, they're provided the work and the support that they need so they can stay on track with the class. That has been an incredible lift for our school sites, and I really want to recognize all the staff, certificated, classified, our administrative teams. They've really just worked incredibly hard to make sure that students are safe at school, that they have all the necessary PPE in place, and that they're monitoring the contact tracing closely. One of the things we're really proud of in the district, and I want to say, I believe we have the best rapid testing clinic in the Bay Area. We have staffed it. We've staffed it with our own staff. We have our LVNs and our medical assistants in our rapid testing clinic. We're open five days a week, two days, Tuesdays and Thursdays at Deer Valley, and Monday, Wednesday, Fridays at Antioch High. We have bilingual clerical staff there to support our community. They're welcoming. We've received a ton of compliments from parents and staff, letting us know that they appreciate how efficient. They get a text within about 15 to 20 minutes of taking the test. It lets them know the results of the test, and then that can be shared with the school site. We originally, and I'll go to the next slide, we originally had about, you can see from the chart, 800-plus people who had come through prior to October 11th. And the week of October 11th, we started testing and requiring that our staff were on vaccinated tests. And then in the last two weeks, we've had 846 people come through. 55% have been students, 45% staff. Yesterday, we served a record number of people, 163 people came through the rapid testing clinic. Staff did a beautiful job, and because we enrolled in the state testing system, we have a secure system, secure medical software that we're using. It's safe and secure for our families, and they get a text message with the results same day, and it's free of cost. So we're very proud of that, and I'm proud of the work that our bilingual staff and our LVNs have been doing in the rapid clinic. I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Romeo to talk about the school employees.
And I do want to thank Director Wisely and Mr. Larson because they've done a phenomenal job in setting this up, in addition to receiving some grant funding through the state that is reimbursing us for all of the costs related to it. So, good job. We've also, as you may have heard in the news, there was recent order from CDPH to for all school employees must either show proof of vaccination and/or test weekly. So this has been a great asset to our employees so that they can go to our rapid clinics and do the testing. Those tests are uploaded, and we receive a report every morning that gives us the name of the employees that have tested and the results so that they can remain in the classroom with our students. This is a big undertaking. I can't tell you how much it is to test or get vaccination status on 2,500 students. So I have to thank our HR department, who has done a tremendous job of getting these into a system that we can track and make sure that we're following all the rules. But the ultimate reason behind this is making sure our staff and students are safe, and we now are doing that on a weekly basis. Our new hires, our new hires are having to do the same. They either have to show vaccination, or they need to test weekly, and they're given that information as they start with us each day.
Finally, we have built a very comprehensive website. So if you go to our district website, you'll see lots of different tabs with resources, resources for the community, bilingual resources, resources that guide you on where to get a vaccine, where if you want to get tested beyond our clinic, some safety guidelines, information about quarantine and isolation. Very proud of the website that we've built. And again, I just want to thank our school sites, the classified, certificated staff, the management staff at our school sites, and like Deputy Superintendent Romeo said, our HR department, our maintenance department, everyone has worked very hard to ensure our children are safe, and we're very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know this was Trustee Hernandez's request, so I want to give the floor to him, should he have any questions or comments.
Yeah, no, this was awesome. I'm so glad to get this information. I think it's a great, you know, COVID is one of the things that is on the mind of school districts everywhere, and I think, you know, making sure we're regularly on top of things is very important. I think the main question I have is, do we have any initiatives that are still underway, that are still finishing up being implemented? And maybe if you have any information on things that are coming in the future, because I know that things are kind of changing, and even commenting on that can be challenging.
I really appreciate that question. Am I okay to take that on the vaccine part? We had a meeting today. Associate Superintendent Ibarra and Mr. Larson and myself met with Kaiser and CDPH. We're collaborating to bring a regular vaccination clinic on our school sites that will be at the high schools as well as our testing. So we're gonna be rolling that out. Because they're coming out with the vaccine for children, there'll be an opportunity for the community to come out, and we're finalizing the details, the dates, but we will have that available at both Deer Valley and Antioch High. We've become a hub for the community at both those sites. So our elementary schools, our middle schools have been using our high schools. They've been very welcoming. We're grateful to the principals for providing space, and so we're looking forward to having the vaccine clinic soon.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that. I think I just have one final comment that maybe fits here, maybe in future agendas, but I think it'd be great to see an update of, you know, additional COVID things that are happening in a few months, as we have some of these additional initiatives here to kind of continue clarifying that for the public, for us to make sure that we're overseeing those pieces. But thank you so much for those presentations. It was awesome.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Trustee Dr. Lewis?
So first of all, thank you and your team for putting this together. It's really impressive. And, you know, I can only imagine how stressful it is sort of adapting to, you know, it's a, I won't say where I work, but where I work. You know, we're constantly having to sort of adapt to legislation as it comes down. So I guess my first question is, sort of the website, how often is that revisited and updated?
So I have a wonderful administrative assistant who assists me with keeping track of the COVID-positive cases with students and staff, and she updates that every Friday. The technology department, to build a system that really works with especially accuracy, we do, we are streaming attendance dashboards so you can see COVID-related absences. So every Friday, the SIS department goes in, updates those dashboards, pushes that information out. As we build guidance, let's say for athletics, or for music, or for visitors on campus, we do post that periodically under the different tabs so parents can find that guidance. CDPH has changed course a couple times, so when they do change documents, we do post the new documents on the website.
Okay. So one other question. So, you know, you mentioned that the vaccine is being rolled out, and it's sort of being suggested now for, I think it's 5 to 11?
Yes.
That range? So can we make it clear that, you know, the directive or the guidance will not come from this board for whether or not that's sort of a mandate for the school district? That's sort of a, if I'm, and I'm asking this generally, that's a mandate from the county or the state?
Correct. We don't have a mandate for students, and what it is, is we were asked, and they looked for communities such as Antioch, where it's more difficult for parents to get their students over to get vaccinated. So it is completely voluntary, and it is with parents' consent.
I just wanted to make that very clear, because I know in some other districts, that is the case.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Trustee Roach or Trustee Hack, any questions or comments?
No, just thank you. Glad for doing it.
It's a great job, I swear, because it's hard. We're all in the same situation, and we're all worried about what's gonna happen the next, and we can't determine that. Something is told us, told from upper, of what we need to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wisely and Ms. Romeo for that, and hopefully we'll be hearing from you semi-soon. So thank you. All right, next up, we have access to technology. So is this Ms. Romeo?
Yes, this is me again. A little busy tonight. I may ask Joe to jump in as necessary, so he's gonna get the presentation started for
Can everyone out there hear us, or do we need to speak a little louder? Some, everyone can hear?
Okay. I apologize. No, it's a little low.
I think you're good.
So this evening, we're here to provide you with the technology report showing where we were at pre-pandemic. Thanks. Showing where we were pre-pandemic, and then where we are today and where we're hoping to go. So prior to the pandemic, Antioch Unified had approximately 5,000 laptops in the district at various school sites, and it varied depending on a lot of school site funds as to how they chose to use their money. So most of the laptops were between five and seven years old, and as you know, laptops and computers after that period of time start to age out. So we were looking at having to replace anyway. Most of the, the ratio at most of our schools was approaching three to one, or one laptop to every three students. Next slide, Joe. In the fall of 2020, when everything kind of came to be, we purchased a little over 10,000 laptops, and we distributed them immediately to our students so that they can continue their learning remotely. About 1,000 hotspots were purchased for families that did not have access to internet, and that was thanks to a generous $250,000 donation from a family foundation of one of our teachers here in Antioch Unified. Some of our school sites also purchased additional laptops because they wanted to be prepared to return to in-person learning. So as they used their site money, some of the things that they normally would do during the year, because we were remote, they didn't do, and so they did start purchasing laptops as well there. In the summer of 2021, we did have a return of all of the laptops and hotspots to Antioch Unified at the end of the year so that we could prepare them for in-person learning. Our laptops had to be inspected, repaired, upgraded, and our technology department, I cannot give a big enough shout-out, they did a great job in trying to turn those around as quickly as possible and get them back to our schools so that we can work, our teachers had them in the classroom, and our students were able to use them. Approximately 1,600 of the laptops that were returned are still in need of repair. They are repairable, but we will need to do that as we're redistributing. We did take a little break as schools started back up to deal with all of the technology issues that were happening at the school site, and now they're getting back to the repairs. Some hotspots did need replacement chargers and cables, and we have provided those. Approximately 80% of all laptops and hotspots that were given out in the beginning of last year have been returned to the district, so that's a very large percentage of return. This fall, we redistributed the laptops to the schools. It didn't happen as quickly because, again, we needed to get them redone, and each school has now received an allotment equal to approximately 80% of the number of their enrolled students. Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy, Black Diamond Middle School, and Prospects High School are one-to-one schools due to their academic programs, so every student in those programs does have a computer. We did receive approximately 1,600 new laptops last week, and the technology department is processing and deploying them to the designated schools to try to increase that 80% to even higher. And approximately 1,600 additional laptops were ordered and are due to be delivered in November. There is, again, a shortage of laptops, as well as a lot of other items in schools, but we're, so we're continuing to experience some delays there. In the fall, we also provided hotspots to Black Diamond Middle School, Thomas Gaines Academy, and Prospects High School are one-to-one schools due to their academic programs, Middle School, Thomas Gaines Academy, and Prospect High School students to support the remote learning that is going on. We do still have some hotspots available to schools upon request for students that may need internet at home. And they simply need to go in and ask for that either at their school site or down at the district office. The Deer Valley High School Business Tech Lab was re-equipped with new desktops for their students. DVTV, we received brand-new desktops to replace their aging computers for production use. And the AHS Edge Academy Lab was re-equipped with brand-new computers and monitors to replace their aging computers. The next two slides, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on, but it does tell you how many student computers and how many staff computers have been set to each site. Additional ones. So some of our future planning is, you know, many technology changes have taken place, not only in the world, but definitely at AUSD in a very short period of time. We need to plan around the infrastructure design and support to, to support those changes. We did, as the board approved in the ELO grant, we did hire four additional technology staff, and that is very helpful. I don't know that it's going to be enough long-term, but it has definitely helped with the backlog. And then obviously, we'll start working on professional development on integrating technology in a traditional classroom setting. We recently received notice of our award under the Educator Effectiveness Grant. And so that will be coming to the board in November, because that will also allow us to do professional development for not only our certificated staff, but also our paraprofessionals to support them in this endeavor. So with that, thank you for taking the time to hear about our technology, and happy to answer any questions that you have, or Mr. Gangler will help me out with those.
Thank you, Ms. Romeo. I believe this was another one that trustee Hernandez brought forward to us, as well as an amalgamation of our concerns. But I'll give the floor over to you, trustee Hernandez, if you have questions or comments.
Yeah, thanks for this presentation. This was great. I'm wondering, do we have a sense of what the shortage is? Or even, I know pre-pandemic, we were three to one. Do we have a sense of approximately what that ratio might be now?
With, we're closer. We're getting closer to one-on-one currently. But remember, as they start to age out, we'll need to replace. And so we need, we'll need to look at that. In the ESTER Plan this evening is a recommendation for some money to put, be put towards both the infrastructure and technology devices. And with that, that will definitely get us closer to having computers in the classroom for every student.
Got it. And do we have a sense of, I guess, I've been having a number of conversations where, and why I think that this is something that is urgent, is that when students lack laptops, often it is also parents that lack laptops. And as our technology has been moving towards having all these dashboards and ways for parents to check in on the progress of students through technology, there's also that barrier, I think, that's missing there. And I know something that has been talked a lot about, a lot with this board, is how do we continue to engage more parents? And so that's a barrier that I've been hearing about a little bit more now, about how do we also provide, this technology also helps parents in checking in on their students, and we'll also feel that kind of parent engagement piece there.
Well, I won't say that we have enough computers to go past our students at the current time. And right now, the, the computers are in the classrooms primarily. They're not going back and forth, so that the students have, do have them available to them. But it's always something that we could look at with funding that comes in. But I also worry a little bit about the replacement, because if we want to continue to be, you know, nearer one-to-one, we have to have a plan in place to replace as those age, because you're looking at three to four years before we need to. And we bought them all in a very short period of time. And so we have to start getting on some type of a rotation.
Right. And I think then my, my final question, which you've definitely touched on in different capacity, but I just kind of want to formalize it. What, what are the barriers that we need to address if we want to become a one-to-one school district?
I think that's the, the largest one is about financially being able to set aside to continue to replace them as needed. Almost all of these computers, if not all of them, were purchased through one-time monies. At some point, those one-time monies are going to be gone. And so, you know, to put that type of a cost into our annual budget would be difficult to replace them all at the same time. But that's about planning, and, and all of a budget is prioritizing where you want to put your funds.
All right. Well, thank, thank you so much. It was a great presentation. I appreciate it.
Other questions?
I was going to ask.
Trustee Rocha.
I don't know if I heard this correctly or not. So if a family needs a computer at home, is that possible or not?
We have not done that to date since, since we're back in person, unless they're in a remote program. But if there is a need, reach out, we'll see what we can do. But we don't have enough to do to every household in the evening.
Is it up to each school, though, if they have maybe more computers?
We would have to look at that, because right now, we have not distributed, except for the schools that are in remote, their program requires every student to have it. They're at about 80%. So I don't know that any school would have enough to do that. But it's definitely something I can follow up on for the board if they have interest.
Well, I'm just concerned, because I know that some families might not have it. I've even had one family call me about it. And I referred it to the school, and I assumed that it was going to be taken care of. Because if a teacher's assigning work to be done at home through computers, you know, that child is failing.
Yeah. I think all of our students, our, our teachers are cognizant of not assigning work that, you know, obviously, students would be able, would not be able to do. But it's definitely something I can't answer fully. I don't know if Ms. Abara can, but we can get the answer for you if not.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, bringing it up like this, because I know that we're, I hear your concern about how we're limited to the amount of computers that we have.
And I haven't received any requests for that, but that doesn't mean the need's not out there.
No, I think it has maybe been done in a local situation. The other thing is, in the future, if we do have, finally get the abundance of computers, if there could be some classes for parents, I don't know if that's in your future thinking, maybe through the adult education, something that's reasonable for them for time-wise. Because it's true, it's not an easy item for us to follow if we are not used to doing it.
Absolutely. You see, I needed Mr. Gangler's help this evening, so I agree.
Anyway, thank you. I mean, I'm sorry.
But we will definitely talk to our adult head.
Sometimes I'm not sure if I've covered it or not, because I didn't hear it that far. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Dr. Lewis?
Yes. So thank you for that. And to, I'd like to, not formally second, but I would agree. You know, I think that the technology divide for parents can cause different issues in the house, you know, without sort of going into details of what those issues are. But it can complicate things in the home. So having some sort of training would be very beneficial. And then especially, you know, as trustee Hernandez said, talking about sort of accessing those dashboards and things like that, it can be really helpful. I did have a couple of different questions. And they're sort of loosely related. So, you know, you mentioned, or it was mentioned in the presentation, the laptops that are five to seven years old, they sort of cycle out. What is, what is the process for once that laptop is cycled out? Like, what happens?
We have an actual, the process is set in code. We have to go through a process on all obsolete equipment, and you will see that to the board quite often, as we go through and do those. But there is an absolute set process that you must follow in before you just, you know, destroy, if you will.
Well, I mean, the reason I ask is I think that that presents a potential learning opportunity, because as we think about future employment, we think about training our kiddos for life, you know, the technology is going to be a big part of it. And with those, if we call them cycled-out laptops, that could present an opportunity for the kiddos to get in there, tinker with them, whether it's through engineering, whether it's through, you know, learning how to rebuild and things like that. Just something to sort of think about. Look, not looking for an answer, but I think that presents us with an opportunity for our kiddos to, to learn. So that was more of a comment than, than a question. And then lastly, you mentioned a grant that we received, that will become, become before the board.
So part of the, the budget this year included an Educator Effectiveness Grant, similar to the expanded learning grants that, that you saw before. And we did get notified late last week that our allocation is about 3.4 million. They, they gave you the allocation and the template in about a week before. All of it has to go to the board twice before December 31st. So we are working on, and we only have two board meetings. So Ms. Abara, Ms. Beckencourt, and I are working collaboratively with others to try to come up with a plan to bring forward. But it is about professional development for teachers and for, for paraprofessionals to work with students in the classroom.
Okay. And some of that will be here before technology?
Uh, no, the technology is the ESTER Grant this evening, and it was part of the ELO grant that the board re-approved a couple of months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to end with a comment, just thanking both of you, Ms. Romeo and Director of Technology, Mr. Gangler. This was a monumentous task, taking our district from where we were before to where we are now, especially with the use of Teams and all these different platforms. And I do appreciate the fact that our meetings have been kept safe. And so I just really appreciate all the work that the technology department has put into this.
I understand.
Alrighty. Are there any other questions? Ms. Trustee Hack?
Not really.
Okay. Do you want to just, all right, um, do you want to take a five? Do folks want to take a quick five to just use the restroom real quick? My board?
Board, yes.
Yes, we're good. Okay. Okay, we're going to take a quick five. It is 8:42 right now. So let's get back at 8:47. It is 8:42 right now, so let's get back at 8:47.
We should probably restockish our quorum.
President Householder?
I'm here.
Vice President Lewis?
Here.
Trustee Hack?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Rocha?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Alright, so moving right along, we are up at number eight, which is hearings. We don't have any this evening. I'm realizing I don't have my glasses on, like, why can't I read? Uh, nine is public presentations. We do not have any, and then next up, we have our consent items, and I'll remind folks, these are things that we've seen before, kind of our standard, um, practice, but I need a pool to vote on separately, or questions on anything, or a motion.
I just had two super brief comments. Just wanted to briefly highlight items T and U, and I'll go in reverse order. I wanted to highlight U, which is an agreement with Kaiser Permanente on behalf of Dozer Libby, uh, to provide some mental health training programs there. I know in the past meetings, we had some comments about another grant that we have that was providing counselors for Deer Valley and Antioch High School, so I'm glad to see this on here to addressing some of the needs, um, at our other high schools as well. And then my quick comment on T is, um, it's on the One Day at a Time ODAP program, which is a great program that's been here for a while. I just kind of want to drop a quick comment, and I'll mention this again during future agenda items, that about a year ago, we had Manhood present their program, and I think it'd be great to hear from ODAP if they'd like to come and share all the great successes that they've been having.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, my only comment is, and I brought this up to the Superintendent, there are so many programs that we are adopting here, and plus those that we have in school. I'd ask if we could, as board members, get an idea of every school and their programs that they're providing for students, reading, writing, arithmetic, mental health, everything, so that we can know how things are going in each school, because it's hard for us to remember. Once we pass this, sometimes it goes in the back of our mind, and sometimes we can't recall what we've already, we have in the district. So in behalf of the board, I would really ask if we have a listing from each school, so that we can keep on hand and be able to refer to families when they ask us, well, how are you doing this, and what are you doing there? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, uh, Trustee Dr. Lewis?
I think that's a brilliant idea, um, and pushing it a little bit further. I know, uh, it's probably gonna create some work. Eventually, it'd be even sort of more accessible if we created a dashboard, so that way, parents in the community, if they could sort of get to it online, it's just a click, and these are all the programs at whatever school. You know, once that list is created, down the line, it'd be really interesting. I think that would be really helpful, uh, for parents in the community.
And then too, if folks in the community are wondering what your school has, you can look at the SPSA, which is basically the school's LCAP plan, and it will have what programs are there, but I agree, I really like this idea of a dashboard, um, so yeah. Um, other co- nothing? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this.
If you'd like, I would go to make a motion between A all the way down to W, make approval of all these consent items.
So motion made by Trustee Rocha to approve the consent calendar as is. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis. There are no questions. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll for us? Uh, yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve all consent items passes 5-0. Wonderful, and then now we are moving on to our action items. We have quite a few this evening, so I just ask again, if folks have comments that you want to put in, it is helpful to put your little cards in ahead of time. Um, but first up, we have item A is our revised Board of Education meeting schedule for the 2021-2022 school year, Superintendent Romeo?
Yeah, so before you this evening is a revised Board of Education meeting schedule. When we originally set our, um, more board meeting schedule, uh, we didn't have a graduation schedule, and we see now that that's gonna conflict with key times, so I'd ask the board to approve this.
Any questions? Seems straightforward. Yeah, is there a motion? Remove approval, move, uh, motion to approve made by Trustee Rocha?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call our roll? Uh, yes, Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the revised, uh, Board of Education meeting schedule for the 2021-2022 school year passes 5-0. Thank you. So next up, item B, we have our Antioch Education Association, uh, AEA's initial proposal to the Antioch Unified School District for the 21-22 school year, and I believe this would be associated, Superintendent Romeo?
Yes, it is. Um, Government Code, Section 3547 requires that all initial proposals for exclusive bargaining groups be brought out in the public to allow comment on the items that will be discussed in negotiation. This evening is the proposal from Antioch Education Association. We have agreed, um, it was a full year, a full three-year contract, but we are going to delay that by one year and open two items, as well as salary and benefits. I look forward to a very collaborative negotiation session with all of our bargaining units, and I would ask the board to accept this proposal this evening.
And I see we have our AEA representative?
Um, yes, we do.
So I don't know if you want to say a few words on this?
Sure, um, I'm Bob Carson, I'm a proud teacher at Park Middle School, and I'm also the bargaining chair for AEA. Um, so I'm here tonight to officially, uh, sunshine our bargaining proposals and, uh, get the bargaining started for the 21-22 school year. The articles we're opening up for bargaining this year are Article 11, which is ours, Article 12, which is salary, Article 13, which is health and welfare benefits, and Article 15, which is class size. Uh, we are committed, the AEA is committed to the students of AUSD and to their success. We hope to improve working conditions, which in turn improves the learning of our students. So we're looking to, forward to a, uh, productive and collaborative bargaining here. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I know that in the past, we have, uh, had a really great relationship with AEA, so I appreciate Deputy Superintendent, I apologize, uh, Ms. Romeo for, you know, being a collaborative partner in that. And so, I don't have any questions, but no questions from Trustee Rocha, none from Trustee Dr. Lewis, none from Trustee Hernandez, none from our former AEA member. Yes, alright, so is there a motion then?
I said move.
Move approval by Trustee Dr. Lewis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. Uh, may we please have a roll call vote? Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Uh, the motion to approve the Antioch Education Association initial proposal for the 2021-2022 school year passes 5-0. Thank you. Alright, next up, we have our big one this evening, SR3 expenditure plan, um, and so I believe I'm, uh, turning this over to our Deputy Superintendent.
It's actually going to be a, um, collaborative between me and Associate Superintendent Abara, but I'll get started on our expenditure plan. I wanted to bring the back, the board back a few, um, to our, our original budget meeting that we talked about what revenues we have, um, our local control funding formula, which includes both our base and our supplemental and concentration grants, which the board approved, um, for the beginning of this school year, our federal, state, and local, um, sources that we have from various Title I, things of that nature, our grants that the board has seen, um, as well as some local funds, our COVID-19 reopening funds. We had SR2, which did not require approval, and we are still working to develop the use of those, as well as SR3, which is in front of the board this evening. When we look at, um, how to, uh, portion funds, we always make sure that we keep the board's goals in line, which is financial solvency, academic excellence, safe and welcoming schools, effective and collaborative organization, parent and community involvement, high-quality curriculum and targeted instruction, as well as responsible resource management. All of our, our plans tie into our LCAP goals, so I just wanted to put these here for the board, um, to review, which is our stu- goal one is our student achievement, goal two is our school connectiveness, goal three is college and career readiness, and four is the 21st century learning environment. So as we prepare the, um, plan, the expenditure plan, we kept these tied to our LCAP goals. So SR3 is, um, the Antioch Unified is due to receive $30,531,253, and that money needs to be spent from the period of March 1st, 2020 through September 30th of 2024. None of those funds have been expended, we, um, needed to bring a plan forth, bring a plan to the board, and we're doing that this evening, and then once it's approved, we will start all of the actions that are in that plan. The board, um, must adopt the plan by Friday, which is April 29th, and the plan must be reviewed, and appro- and if appropriate, revised no, no more than every six months. So you will see this plan with where we're at, at least every six months, to see if we need to make any changes, what's working, what's not working, and how do we, um, adopt And finally, just a reminder of the uses of SR3, and it is pretty wide, um, you know, it's developing strategies and implementing public health protocols, activities reducing virus transmission, um, activities around air quality, um, 20% has to be addressing the academic learning loss and mental health issues, uh, activities related to family engagement, mental health supports, as well as any activity that would have been allowed under the Original Cares Act, and as I said, that is pretty wide open in what those need to be. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Abara to talk about our survey and the outreach that we did.
Good evening, Board. So, starting, um, it was back in September, we created a survey, um, that focused in on a number of areas, and we sent that out, I think we may have even shared that with you, it was posted on our website, we blasted it out through Remind, we sent it out, you know, to our sites, so that they could get it out to their staff and their students. And so through that, we, we received a lot of feedback, which was wonderful to see, uh, which was the whole purpose of the survey, because when we hold meetings, which we did that too, you only have so many people that can attend, but when you put out a survey, you get a much broader reach of what folks are wanting to see. And so, we got a lot of input from students, parents, teachers, staff, admin, and community So in this slide, this is giving you a sense of how many, so we, we received, um, 2,200-ish, um, responses, and from that, you can see there, the majority were our parents, uh, we had a good, um, amount of students that we heard from, teachers, administrators, and so forth, you can see the breakdown there. I want to assure you that all schools were represented, because we could run it, we, we intentionally wanted to see who, um, was taking the survey and what schools they represented, and all across the board, every school had representation in taking this survey. So in the first area, we asked, uh, about supports for students with regards to academics, and I know that that's really small print, but we took, we really highlighted the top three. So number one, what you'll see there is access to technology, so we've already talked a lot about that this evening, and so that's a priority. Um, after school, tutor, uh, after-school intervention and tutoring, that came in in number two, and then number three, class size reduction for our middle and high schools. In the next one, we focused on social, emotional, and mental health priorities. Number one came in at mental health services to provide consistent, one-on-one student support. Behaviorist was number two, to support with chronic extreme behaviors, and then number three, wellness rooms and related staffing, staffing to support the social, emotional health of all students. Next was specific to safety, student safety and security priorities. Sorry, I have to get to my page, because I can't see that far. So in the, number one was having, maintaining those PPE and the masks and shields and all the things that we do to keep our students safe in that way. Number two was bullying prevention initiatives, and number three, security staffing. And then in this category, what we focused in on family and community needs and priorities, number one was school supplies, number two, training for parents on how to support their child, and three, parent communication and engagement. So we also had, um, an opportunity for, for those that took the survey to share things that weren't on the list, um, and, and be able to provide more, and so these are the trends that surfaced. We probably, I'd say, of the 2,200, we probably had a little over 1,200 suggestions, and so those are the things that came from that. Um, so really highlighting, uh, mental health supports, after-school programming, and enrichment, that came out. Facilities upgrades and repairs, that came out pretty strongly, there was a, they called out a number of schools that they felt needed a little extra TLC, um, better food for students, technology upgrades, increasing staffing ratios, and salary increases for staff. And I will say too, that not only was this from the survey, so we conducted three, um, parent or community meetings, we had a D-LAC meeting for our district English learners, they were able to provide feedback, we had our parent advisory committee and our African-American pa- parent advisory committee, and we also had a parent or community meeting specific for the SR3, uh, so that we went into greater detail. And, and in there, we asked, um, in those parent, in those community group meetings, we were asking, like, for instance, parents highlighted, they said they wanted more training on how they can help their child, so we wanted to ask, dig down deeper, well, what training would you, would you like to see, so we could get a little bit more greater detail, so we could, um, fine-tune it and meet their needs. So here, with the strategies for continuous and safe in-person learning, wellness rooms, oh, let me, this is, I'm now moving into the actual SR3, okay? So with this, we, we, we kind of captured, the, the document that you, you see, the what's attached to our agenda, it kind of breaks it down into three big sections. So the first section is strategies for continuous and safe in-person learning, and so these are the things, um, Deputy Superintendent Romeo is going to give you more of the detail on it, um, and the breakdown in terms of cost, but these are the things that we are proposing to finance with the SR3 monies. So well, wellness rooms, so not only establishing a wellness room, but able to staff those wellness rooms, um, community resource coordinators for students and families experiencing homelessness and hardship, uh, supporting our technology infrastructure, technology devices, COVID-19 prevention and mitigation strategies, classroom supplies and instructional materials, mental health services, English learner services, ethnic studies and cultural responsive teaching, and multitude systems of support. And the next slide is gonna be microscopic up there, but if you're in the plan, you'll be able to see it much larger, and this I'm gonna leave to Ms. Romeo to-
And I'm gonna touch on it briefly, because it is in the plan, but what we looked at is taking each of those items, some are funded over two-year programs, some are over a three-year program, and a lot of them may have had some other funds that would go towards it as well, such as PPE and some of our, um, air conditioning, things of that nature. So under each, um, each of the items, you will see in here the amount that has been allocated under this plan. Again, this is a plan that can be changed as we move forward, but I think based on the, um, survey and the input that we got from the community and staff, the top three in every category, we tried to re- meet all of those, as well as, um, some of the other items and the trends that we saw. So, um, I'm not gonna go through each one, because it is very hard for me to see even on my computer, um, but if there are any questions on particulars at the end, I'd be happy to answer them.
So the next category is addressing the impact of lost instructional time, and so in that, we are looking to fund elementary intervention teachers to continue that, uh, reduce class size in our secondary, um, schools, expanding, expanded learning opportunities, so that could be after-school, uh, summer programming, uh, instructional material- So that could be after-school, summer programming, instructional materials and textbooks, attendance and engagement initiatives, and professional development. And again, here's a microscopic image of that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely. Trustee Rocha.
On this one, I think, I feel like I'm getting to what I really interested in. This is the attendance engagement. Attendance of students and engagement of parents. Is there a process here that you're going to implement or something that you have? Can you give me any insight?
That will be something that we will expand upon. I think inside there, you, when you, when you look at the plan, it breaks it down. There's some bullets there. A lot, in part, it's an extension of what we have in LCAP. It's to be able to build a little bit more of a robust, you know, opportunities to engage our families and, you know, increase student- I want to say, student engagement is a very important piece of it. Oftentimes, we think of attendance and isolation. But when you have programs in your schools that are naturally engaging, students will come. And we see, we see this in, as a small example, at Black Diamond, where we have a project-based learning platform, student attendance shot up. So we're looking at it that way as well. We're not just looking at, you know, making sure our families have alarm clocks, but we're really looking at the programs we have in our schools that engage students and giving students that opportunity to engage in learning in a way that they feel they have voice and choice.
I guess I'm more into the parent, in outreach into the parent, and the need to have someone on site that responsible to that.
Right.
And then the outcomes, and that should reduce attendance.
And that's something that we're also building out. And we're, what we've learned through talking with the DA and the truancy, in the truancy court's system is that oftentimes, attendance is a symptom of a bigger problem.
Exactly.
And families need support, maybe they need wraparound services. So that is, these are other ways in which we can expand our efforts. We're already doing that, but we can make it even, you know, we can have more people to do, provide that service.
Well, it's a real strong issue for me, especially in the elementary, because if you can prevent it at the elementary, you can, you know, resolve it-
At those foundational years, yeah.
And I just want to make sure we put emphasis, and if there's some schools that need some extra help, financially, we could support it and maybe come up with a plan of action that might work in one school, could be adopted by another school, and just to see if it works, because outreach is so important to our parents. And especially now, since they've been shut off for the whole, during this duration, that now we're opening schools again, and we need to have that welcoming and a person that's there that they can identify with, that they can at least be able to speak to and not have to, you know, it's just a warm feeling. I'm sorry. I, this is one of my things that I'm really interested in.
It's a passion of yours, and we appreciate that it is. It is ours too.
And then, Trustee Rocha, I actually have the five different action descriptions right here, if you want me to read it for you?
Well, I don't want to take the time. I mean, I'll read it, but I have to bid my magnifying glass to see.
Okay.
Okay. Is there another? We're gonna, okay, and then the third section, the other section that's in there is use of any remaining funds. And so what we heard loud and clear, probably in every meeting and in throughout the survey, is making sure that we are doing everything we can to recruit and retain staff and that we do spend some of this money on our facilities that are in desperate need of some TLC. And I will, there's that little bitty. Okay, and then, any questions?
All right, I think we should first take public comment, and then we'll ask questions. So first up, I only have two for eleven for this item, so if you want to put in a comment, please put in a card. So first up is Deb Hubbard, and then Willie Mims. And those are the only two I have for this. If you want to put in a comment.
Good evening, President Householder, Board members, as well as Superintendent Nanello and Cabinet members. Deb Hubbard, I wear two hats tonight. I'm really representing AEA as the treasurer of the AEA Union. Also, as an AUSD employee, a member of the district's Wellness, Culture, and Climate Team. My team consists of myself, my counterpart Dave Neal, a consultant, Jen Lynn Whaley, who works with us, as well as Director Essence Phillips, Director Scott Bergerhouse, and we fall under Christina Barra's wing of the district. So that's the WCC team, commonly referred to as the WAC team, which sort of fits. But I want you to know that the presentation of the ESR funds, you know, you and I learned about it the same night. I was listening to the board, board on August eleventh, heard about the thirty million ESR three funds and went, what? Took it back to Dave and Jen, and we have been working diligently since then. We talked to counselors, administrators, teachers on a weekly, if not monthly basis, took into account all of the needs that are going on. You know, we've returned to school, and people think that we're returning to normal, but wearing masks, nothing could be further from the truth. This is not normal. Hopefully, one day we can return to normal. But everyone has endured this pandemic, which is not over. And so what the WCC, sorry, the WCC team came back to was a bunch of proposals that we actually brought to the Executive Board of AUSD. They listened to us. They asked, hey, can you come back with some priorities? We did that. I want you to know that AEA held a meeting with teachers and counselors for their input. Yes, the district put out a survey to all students, staff, and parents, as well as a community meeting with, with anybody who wanted to attend. I was actually in a breakout room with a parent who didn't know who I was, and her first thing was, mental health. If you've been watching the news, our students need mental health, social, emotional needs. If you know anything about brain science, when we were, when we were put into distance learning in March of twenty twenty, pretty much all of our kids were socially arrested at that age. If you think you're an eighth-grade teacher this year, no. You are teaching kids that are socially developed at sixth-and-a-half grade. So mental, social, emotional health needs are great, and this ESR three plan addresses all of that. Trustee Rocha, you talked about helping our families. Absolutely. Our communities of color have been disproportionately touched by this pandemic and continue to be. Address your needs. Community resource coordinators for all of the middle schools will hopefully help all of the families. If you know anything about Latasha Wade at Park, she's doing an excellent job. So these, I urge you to approve this, these ESR three funds. They're tremendously needed by our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Mims.
To the Board, President, Superintendent, members of the community, Willie Mims, Education Chair of East County NAACP. It's been some time since I've addressed this live board, and so it's, it's very enlightening, you know, to see human faces without looking at a monitor. But I was, had some concerns about this plan and how it's being presented to the Board. This plan is just coming to you, and when you're talking about this spending thirty million dollars, the plan should have come to you as an informational item first, not as an action item. This isn't, this is on your agenda as an action item. You've not had an opportunity to even discuss and talk about and make suggestions to staff about changes and things of that nature. So the plan is coming to you in the wrong, at the wrong time. And I understand that minus, my, what I heard the staff say, that it has to be approved by the twenty-ninth. That is insane. It's two days. They're coming to you with this plan, two days before it's supposed to be approved. It should have come before you a long time ago as an informational item, so you can discuss it. So that's my criticism of this plan today. The other thing is that I was kind of skimming through some of the, the staff reporting the plan. You spend, you have four million, five hundred thousand dollars to recruit and retain staff. So my concern about that is that how much of that is going to be focused in on recruiting and retaining African-American staff? You are short in that area across the board. You, you have four million, eight hundred thousand plus in facilities and repairs. And in the attendance and engagement component, you have only two hundred thousand dollars. That is crazy. If you have an attendance problem and, and, and engagement problem with some of the students who look like me, then two, what is two hundred thousand? It's crumbs. And so I think that, you know, that, I understand that you claim it has to be in by the twenty-seventh, but, but the staff are doing you a disservice by bringing this to you this day, two days before it's supposed to be, supposed to be approved. Thank you.
And then we have Velma Wilson.
Good evening again. So let me just make sure I'm, I'm really clear and thank you to the staff that have actually already had presented this to the Board and for the discussion, for, especially for all the background work that has been done with the community members, meetings, the PAC meeting, which I sat in on, also the African-American Parent Advisory Committee meeting that's set on, to do this groundwork. This is not the first Board meeting that this has come up. So thank you to the staff for doing your job on that regard. So I would hope that you all go forward and approve this, because we have, you all have done your due diligence in making sure that the public and this here Board has, are aware of what is happening here tonight. I will also state that, thank you for, Trustee Rocha, for bringing up the fact of wanting to know more of what that looks like in terms of student engagement on the school sites. This is, goes back to what I said earlier this evening. Start coming out and seeing what's really happening at these schools, so you know that there is a lot of effort to go around, to really help and engage these students in positive manners and to produce those positive outcomes that we all want to see. Also, I want to say thank you to Flow Water, who has come and put water dispensers on Dallas Ranch's campus as a test to see we can get kids drinking and hydrating and doing, and giving them better and clean water. We have, in speaking with Director of Facilities and Maintenance, Jeff Collins, he is also looking for how we can push this so all students and all school campus has that, has that ability to have those drinking refill stations instead of being relied on the water fountain, especially in the state of COVID. So this is another opportunity, and thank you so much for just being able to authentically look and involving the parents and the students in this initiative to really utilize those funds with an informed lens. I really do appreciate. It's unfortunate that some don't know that we have already been having these discussions, and we had the parent meetings and got the input in the surveys that you all have done to do the work to make sure that you're operating from an informed status. So good job, AUSD.
And are there any other written comments submitted for eleven C, Ms. Cavalier or Superintendent Nella? Okay. All right, so then that's back to our questions. So I will actually start off, because I have a lot of thoughts. But my first question is, was this translated into Spanish, whether written or oral?
When we presented it, it was presented in Spanish.
Okay, yeah, because on page seventeen, it says that we are required to have it be either in written language or it could be orally recorded. So if we don't have that on the website for this, I urge us to do that quickly rather than later.
It's not on the website yet, because it hasn't been approved.
That makes perfect sense, right? But yeah, I think that, you know, I think the fact that thirty percent of our population can't read this is a problem. And, you know, I mean, I guess before getting into some of my more detailed questions and comments, I do appreciate the amount of work that was put into this. I mean, the survey results that you guys, that you folks gathered is really a lot for, I mean, that's a really good, you know, level of engagement. However, that being said, I was just doing some quick, literally back-of-the-envelope calculations, and it was only less than one percent of all of our students in AUSD filled this out, which is about a little over four percent of our high schoolers. Five hundred and seven of the folks that filled out the survey are staff, which is nearly, it's pretty close to the amount of staff that we have. I believe we're almost close to seven hundred with that. And then, you know, there's one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven parents, and we have seventeen thousand students in this district. And I know it's not just the survey results, because, I mean, you all have done a lot of engagement, and that's very clear. But those survey results alone just give me pause. The fact that we didn't see, because of proportionality, right? So it's like, yeah, there was more parents than staff, but yet proportionally speaking, this is way staff-heavy, way, way staff-heavy. And then, so, you know, obviously, that's an issue for me. Another issue is that, you know, we just saw a slide. I just think it said that all schools were represented. Once again, amazing. I know it's very difficult to get all schools to participate, but we didn't see how many at each school.
I couldn't, I couldn't capture a screenshot, that's why. It was such a long list. It was difficult to show.
And that's fine, and I guess I just wish, that leads me to, I wish that we would have gotten the survey before tonight. And, you know, just to have it be on the record, there was a Board consensus to have a study session before this was brought to the table as an action item. And I am very disappointed that staff did not bring this as a study session to us before. And so full transparency, before I get into these next questions, that's why I will be abstaining from this, from this vote in whatever direction my Board chooses to go, because we have not gotten an opportunity. And I've been on record as saying over and over and over again, I will not vote on something that we do not have active participation, not passive, not an amalgamation of what we've said over the last year, but direct feedback, because, let me get to some of the feedback I have. Four point five million dollars to recruit and retain staff, four point eight million for facilities repairs, facilities we have talked about. But that together is almost a third of this overall budget, so that's just a big glaring issue for me. Fact that it wasn't translated into Spanish for this evening, another issue. And then, what was that other? So one, something I don't see in here, especially under the recruiting and retaining staff, that I know we've specifically talked about is data supports. We've talked about more tech supports, and then we've talked specifically about gyms. And I know that's all encapsulated in these nine point three million dollars, but I just simply do not feel comfortable. You know, just saying, oh, okay, nine point three million dollars in these very vague categories. And so, yeah, for me, I mean, I just don't see, the data's not disaggregated, and I find this to be a little bit too vague for my taste. And I have read the entire ESR plan, actually, twice now. So I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything. And so, yeah, I guess just moving forward, you know, if the Board is, has a consensus that we want to see something come before us, I just ask that we have that opportunity, because it's not fair to the community who talk to us. My sister might not fill out a survey, but she talks to me. My neighbor might not fill out the survey, but they talk to me. And so that's why we are represented as a Board. I've said it once before, please, the peanut gallery, I will have to ask you to leave. All right, so, you know, that is part of the reason that I'm just really honestly quite frustrated with this, because we, as a, we're the Board, right? We are representatives of the community, and our voice hasn't been heard as directly as I think that we needed to be heard in this. So that's why I just said, you know, full transparency about where I stand with this. There's not enough disaggregated data. There's not enough data, period. And we just didn't get a chance to authentically engage in this in the, in any meaningful way, frankly. And I, again, I just have to underscore, I've said it time and time again, I refuse as a Board member to vote on something that we did not have an opportunity to talk about. And the fact that it's due this Friday doesn't matter. The fact that there's a choice before us this evening means that there's a choice, right? And so it's just, it's just incredibly frustrating that this is happening yet again, when the Board gave direction to not do this. And so I'm assuming, Trustee Dr. Lewis has some, oh, sorry.
President Householder, can I respond, please?
Yes.
I did bring forward to the Board a budget presentation on all funds, and I think the Board has set goals through both the LCAP and through here. And I think the board has set goals through both the LCAP and through here. I did not recall being consensus, the S.R. 3 does not require two board meetings. It just requires it to be approved. And so I believe I was following what we needed to do. As far as recruitment and retention, I want to remind the board that first learning in the classroom is one of the key issues. And if you look around, recruiting and retaining teachers right now is not an easy thing to do. So I do think that's what the parents and staff, and by the way, we have about 2,500 staff. So it is a smaller percentage of those number of students. So with that, I do believe I've given lots of information on S.R. 3. I did hear a lot of input from the board, including about facilities. This board has mentioned that many times. So that is not only the community, but I believe the board's direction as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. It was, we've actually made mention of the study session multiple times. It was back in August when we had our first board study session ever. And it was also back when we did get that budget plan. I remember I specifically held off my questions on S.R. 3 because I was waiting for a doodle poll on when we were available to meet, to have that study session. And yeah, again, amalgamation, we have had passive engagement with this, but I haven't had a chance to look at this document, talk with my colleagues, give the feedback, and then to see that updated. And so, and again, I mean, it might not change at all. It probably wouldn't in a lot of ways. However, that's why I said I was going to abstain on this because it's not that I disagree with what's in it. It's that the board, as representatives of the community, were not given the opportunity to actually, you know, manipulate this or move it in the direction that makes sense with our policy objectives. So. Trustee Dr. Lewis.
So, first of all, not, well, not first of all. So if my understanding is correct, tonight we're voting to accept the plan, not the details and rollout of the plan.
You approved the plan as presented, but as I mentioned, one, it needs to be approved or we have $30 million at risk of not coming to this district. And I don't think anybody wants that for the students of our district. It is a budget and a plan that can be revised. And in fact, under the rules, must be looked at and revised as appropriate at least every six months. And it's money that is, will be spent on our students over three years. So at any time that the board feels that that plan should make another change in a different direction, they can do that. And again, at least six months, but that does not present it from being more often. If you look at the plan itself, it does have data points to look at and ways that we are going to look to see whether or not it's effective. Because things do change and they will change as things go on. We try to incorporate all of the other funding sources that are out there so that we can, we could have a better picture for our students using the various funding sources within the rules of the funding sources. So, you know, I think this is a plan that included a lot of input and tried to meet all of the needs of which there are many and tied into the LCAP goals that this board has approved.
So if I'm understanding correctly, tonight we are...
Mr. Lewis, I'm getting some texts that people can't, are having a hard time hearing you at home.
Can you hear me now?
For the interruption. Okay, sorry about that.
Maybe I should speak louder. Maybe that's it. I have a soft voice. Right. So if I'm understanding correctly, the process as it's being stated is, tonight we are, assuming we're voting, well, yeah, we're voting on sort of the overarching plan and then the, sort of the topics of things that are being earmarked.
No, what you're approving is the actual, what you're seeing tonight was, that we presented was just the PowerPoint presentation. Attached is the actual expenditure plan and that is what you would be approving this evening. And it is the overreaching, but there's a lot of detail in there. For instance, our intervention teachers, our wellness rooms. That is something that if the board approves it, we would have to hire. And we'll, you know, we've already actually started looking at a job description. But those are people that we need to bring on board to be able to support our students.
Okay.
So I was just said I was gonna, if I could piggyback off of it before passing it back over. So I'm a little bit having a hard time to wrap my mind around. We have the opportunity to edit this in the future, but if a majority of what we're spending money on is people, then that would mean firing people, would it not? So what, I mean, truly, honestly, what degree do we have to change this plan in the future? Because it doesn't seem like there's a lot of wiggle room here.
There is a lot of wiggle room because we haven't hired him yet. But if you approve the position, yes, we would be hiring him. There's not a lot more, you know, negotiations are negotiations. Anything that we did as far as the people, salaries to employees, the board has control over that. You give the direction. So you're not approving that that money goes directly in. So there is many opportunities that this board will. Now, you're right, if you were to approve and we go and hire the wellness rooms and you decide in a year that that's not working, it's like any other site funding that we do, there would be a layoff that had to happen related to that. We planned for at least two years intentionally because you're not going to know whether or not the program worked without a little bit of time to do it. And as Ms. Hubbard said earlier, these are programs that they vetted very well and it's working in some of our schools. So we do know that there is success for our students with these programs. The intervention teachers, we currently are using the ELO grant. That would allow it to continue for another year to provide academic support for our students during the school day. Because not all of our students can get that support after school in the summers.
Yeah, and I hear you. And I do, and I don't want to question the validity of any of the programs, per se. I'm just, I'm a process person, so I'm questioning this whole process. And I hear what you're saying too about the, you know, we would lose out on, you know, $30 million. But then again, I wish then we would have gotten this, you know, four, you know, two weeks ago. I mean, we had a four-week break. And so, and so, yeah, I mean, just to my colleagues, because this is kind of what happened to me before I had inherited some decisions that were made. And we were faced with the decision to lay off a lot of our library techs. And it was one of the most brutal, like, feelings, just in general. So thinking about, you know, what we're spending our money on here, if those wellness rooms don't work out, that is decisions that you two definitively will have to make. And it is really, really, really hard to, you know, be faced with that type of decision. And so I feel like we should have just pumped the brakes and followed the process that we lined out, but, sorry.
And I would say that in any funding, any year, the funding can change. Hopefully, we don't have to do. If they're successful, then that's a priority that the board can make and use funding sources from other places in order to support that, such as S and C. But what we do know is if we pump the brakes tonight and there is no approval, there is no, there's probably no going back and that million, $30 million will not come to the students of Antioch Unified. And I feel as, I'm sorry, I feel that as the CBO of this district, I am responsible for the finances and I need to make that clear. You can be upset with me and I can apologize for the timing of how it came in, but I can't change it for you. What I also can't change is this evening is very important for our students to get the funding. And if you want to change it in 30 days, you can do that.
So just sort of, a question sort of popped up during that. So am I right in understanding that we're going to be hiring classified staff for those wellness rooms, for example? Or will that, will those be contracts? Because again, we're assuming that there's a two-year window.
Our plan right now, the one that we have at Park is a contracted. We did get a copy of their job description. We always like to hire inside, even though it may be for a couple of years. We do have some turnover anyway. But our hope is that if it's successful, we're able to complete it. So assuming the board approves this evening, then we would bring you a job description over the next board meeting or two to approve. And then we would go out and recruit and hire. But those will be classified jobs.
Okay.
And then if I could just point out, so in the document, at the end of the document, there are the instructions for the document. And I promise you, we followed it to AT. We made sure we engaged all the people that we needed to. It even has a statement about when it must be approved, how it's approved. It's for review and approval. So that's actually under the introduction. If you go down into community engagement, it spells out exactly how we did it. Both Ms. Romeo and I attended the county training on this and we made sure we were both consulting or like, okay, we have to do this, we have to do that. Because each of these pots of money have come in with different requirements. And we have to make sure we adhere to it. That's our duty. And I think that's your duty is making sure we've adhered to that process, which we did. And so that's there for you if you want to kind of go through it. And then we have even more information from the county that we can share if there's questions after reading those directions. But I, you know, we did everything that we knew that we had to do. We consulted with county and our own staff. And we're confident that we followed, we adhered to what was required of us.
So they didn't ask for it to be posted in Spanish on the site too? Because it literally says right here, written in a language that parents can understand. If it is not practical to provide written translations to parents with limited English proficiency, the plan must be orally translated for parents. So, but that's, but then you see where...
We did that in our DLEC meeting. That was shared in Spanish with them, the parts that we had. We never shared this document in English. We talked, we shared it through PowerPoint. And so with that PowerPoint, we did translate that in Spanish. And once this is approved, if, I don't even know that this one, I haven't looked at that part. If it's required to be posted on our website, we typically will. It will be translated then.
So I did have a couple of questions about the actual PowerPoint. So early, I don't know what page this is. Is the S.R. 3 allowable uses? You mentioned that activities addressing learning loss, 20% of the funds had to be earmarked. And then there was also a comment about mental health supports at 20% as well. Was that 20% total or is that?
Yes, it's 20, but we are well over that percentage door in our...
Yeah, we've checked that as well.
I did have a couple of questions.
I'm going to pop out to you. It's not an end all.
Okay.
Trustee Rocha?
I'm fine with it. I know that I will come back with my issues if they're addressed or not addressed. So I'm relying on your issue pertaining to attendance and pertaining to reaching out to parents.
And I do the same thing. I take notes and questions in it. So I'm sorry.
So secondarily, and it sort of follows up on trustee Rocha's earlier comment. So on the family and community priorities page, it says training for parents and how to, and it goes, it's sort of truncated. But has there been any discussion about how that will be operationalized? And now, some of these I've read, I mean, well, I'm sorry, I've read all of them, but I'm doing this for public consumption.
Right. No, we, so we did have a list in the parent meetings. They had an opportunity to put in the chat box, which we have a record of, of the types of trainings that they would like to have. I know that we have done in the past, this during COVID was one of those wonderful, didn't know this would work so well, but we had almost like a parent university that was virtual. So that was one opportunity because right now we haven't had parents on our campuses. So we were thinking of how can we reach them virtually to do it until which time we can bring them onto our campus and have it more in person. But that's something we're staging for.
So I did have two more questions. The wellness rooms, do we identify, and again, this is for public consumption, per site? Like, you know, is it...
Every site will have a wellness room.
And then how will these be maintained once, and you sort of spoke to it a little bit, how will these be maintained once the funds are exhausted? Because it's, you know, the S.R. funds are one time and I believe that the longest is three years?
Yes, the longest is three years. It goes through 2024. And again, as we look at whether or not they're effective, I mean, I believe they're going to be effective. I have heard what they do and we have data from Carmen Dragon about how students are using them as well as Park. So at the end of the S.R. 2, there will need to be decisions. We have money around supplemental concentration. There's different pots of money that the board can prioritize in three years from now when that money is exhausted. And/or if we find that they're not effective at certain sites, that's why you bring it back and you look at it and say, this is working, this is not working.
And then, sort of my last question is sort of loosely tied into all the previous ones. So I know that we have, like, you know, social workers on campus and I know we have sort of a concentration of foster youth and unsheltered and unhoused youth and families. One of the things that I would like to have heard about, discussed was sort of our connection with social services and those social supports. You know, because when we're talking about supporting students and when we're talking about, you know, improving outcomes, whatever that reality looks like, it's important that we talk about the whole student. And I guess this is more of a comment.
Well, and that is what comes in in the community resource coordinators. It is about helping the families as well as our students because our students are not going to be successful without the families having the support. We did do it at only our middle schools for now. But again, that's something that the board could look at the data and decide moving forward if that's a priority. Because, you know, we could have pretty much anything you want. You just can't have everything. So you have to look and see at some point how you would like to prioritize money. I'd like to think that the economy is going to stay strong because it really is. The news coming out of Sacramento says it's going to be stronger this year. But we can only work with what we have right now. And right now, we know our students are struggling as well as their families.
Well, yes, and what I'm just thinking about, like those existing services, like those existing services. Like how do we coordinate those? And that's sort of a deeper conversation for later, but it's more of a comment. Thank you.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I have a few mostly quick comments. I forgot to toss this in there. So we're having a conversation before, but I did want to highlight how great it is that we have that student engagement piece in there and really talking about that. You know, just a quick anecdote, it's one of my current fascinations and what I'm looking into and trying to expand my knowledge of education is this phenomenon that you see that when you ask a kindergartner, do you like school? 95% of those kindergartners are going to say, yes, I love school. School is great. You ask them in first grade, you see a few less. You ask them in second and so on. And you'll see that dip continue on till right before high school. And then in high school, you do see that increase. But at its slowest point, like one, only one out of every three kids is saying that they like being in school. And so, you know, the more we can address those feelings that kids have, the greater I think we can target some of these attendance issues. So I am glad that we had that quick discussion there and that we highlighted that piece. And then the two other comments I have are really related to, you know, ideas of performance improvement and quality improvement and continuing to improve our data skills as an organization. Because I think, you know, one of the things that's really great about this S.R. plan is it does seem like we have some flexibility to be fairly nimble with it. And we do have a number of different progress measures that we have on this. So I'd say my comment is that I'd love to see the board continue to receive these as, you know, ideally at the frequency that they're stated in here. But I also understand potential challenges with that. You know, perhaps in a Friday board letter, but something to continue looking at that. Because I know I had a conversation with Ms. Romeo and superintendent thinking about, you know, where we've allocated some different things. And it's hard to know the difference between something that is great and something that is best. And that's really what we're trying to get at, you know. And I hate to bring this example because I feel like we've been picking on the wellness rooms with their great and fantastic things. But the example that I remember talking about was I see that we have $800,000 that are towards some mental health clinicians that are going to do some direct one-on-one services with our students and expanding that. And then we have $2.2 million towards these wellness rooms. And it'd be great to see, you know, can we start picking up some metrics? And we have some things on here such as attendance and usage to see, you know, which ones are potentially impacting our students more? And maybe we do need to allocate some more towards those mental health clinicians, you know, because that's, you know, on an intuitive level, I feel like that's probably not enough. But again, I don't know for sure. And it'd be great to continue to use some of these performance-enhancing, performance-improving tools that we have to make sure that we're keeping track of this and being able to modify it. Since it is like a lot of years that we have this. So that's my comment there that I'd just like to continue to see the data that we have that we've set in stone here that we're going to be collecting. And then the last one, a very minor point on ways that we can continue to improve as a district in terms of like surveying and things like that, because I think it was great. I think we got a lot of people. I think we clearly engage a lot of different parent groups. But that doesn't mean that there's not ways to continue improving there. One of the things that stood out to me is thinking about how we can maybe find ways to stratify our data, especially the survey data a little bit more. And it is challenging in terms of some of the things that I'd like to see, such as like disaggregations by race and ethnicity and by certain protected groups that we have in here. And the reason I say that is because we have a number of things in this plan that are specifically targeted towards improving, you know, education for African-Americans. We have improving things for our homeless and our foster youth students. And when we look at this data altogether, it's, you know, by the nature of it, we're making decisions for groups that aren't making their own decisions as strongly. And the more we can disaggregate that data... as strongly. And the more we can disaggregate that data and really get to the core of what those groups in particular are saying, the better we can better serve the needs of those groups, especially if we're targeting them directly. But, but again, I definitely say that with the sense that I think, you know, even in the year that I've been here so far, it does seem like we're making a bigger effort in slowly improving on these things. It's not like an overnight thing that we're suddenly going to be perfect about quality improvement and that we're suddenly going to have all these skills. It is a process as a whole massive organization that employs tons of people trying to get there. So that, that's kind of all my comments. But, but thank you for the presentation. There's a lot of great things in here.
Trustee Hack?
I could say a lot of things, but basically speaking, I'm comfortable with the budget process and the staffing scheduling as it's going forward, because it gives us a lot of options that we're going to have to address. It does help the kids and the staff down the road. So I'm very comfortable with your report and I appreciate the information.
Any follow-up questions or comments? And I would also, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make it.
Go ahead.
Approval.
Oh, all motion to approve the S R plan as presented.
So a motion made by Trustee Hernandez-
I'll second.
And seconded by Trustee Rocha. And doesn't seem like there are questions. Ms. Cavalero?
Trustee Hack?
Oh, yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Abstaining.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The-[689.12][689.12](APPLAUSE) The motion to approve the expenditure plan as presented passes four zero with Trustee, or excuse me, President Householder abstaining.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Item D, 2020, 2021 Early Literacy Support Block Grant for Fremont Elementary School. So I believe this is the-
It's going to be me.
Okay. Or is it you?
We're going to arm wrestle for it. She'll, she'll take it.
Oh, Deputy Superintendent Romeo?
Yes, we're very pleased to announce Fremont Elementary was awarded an Early Literacy Grant, Block Grant for, in the amount of $993,848. So they are using that money to provide additional intervention through some small group intervention work with their students, reading teachers, so on and so forth. So I would ask the board to approve it this evening because it's a wonderful opportunity for that school and for our students.
Questions or comments? None? Questions or comments?
Good job, Fremont Elementary.
I, I move approval. I think it's a wonderful idea. It's great for that particular school.
Motion, motion made by Trustee Rocha to approve this block grant, seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis. And Ms. Cavalero?
Second.
Oh, it was actually, it was seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis already.
Okay.
Thank you, though. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the budget expenditures of the Early Literacy Support Block Grant pass for, on behalf of Fremont Elementary passes five zero.
Thank you. Next up, item E is an addendum to the service agreement with Ascend Rehab. And I know this is an amendment, but I think it's the dollar amount most likely.
It is the dollar amount. As we're having a shortage in many places, but in particular in speech and language pathologists, along with the assistants, because assistants have to be overseen by one of our S L Ps. So this is additional support for our students and I would ask the board to approve it this evening.
And I appreciate that too, because, you know, technically this could have went in consent, but it is nice to have it be an action item. Should we have any questions on it? Doesn't look like questions from my left side. None? None. I would entertain a motion-
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha to approve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. And Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the services agreement with Ascend Rehab Services passes five zero.
Thank you. Next up, we have item F, which is our master contract with Spectrum Antioch Non Public for the 2021-2022 school year. Deputy Superintendent Romeo?
This contract does come in front of the board every year, but it is on the action based on the dollar amount. Some of our students in non-public school pursuant to their IEP are placed in Spectrum. And this is the master agreement that we bring forward each year. We did make some slight changes while it's a little bit late, and it had to do with changing remote learning out into what we're doing this year. So I would ask the board to approve the contract.
And then this is what's N P S, right? Non-public Schools. So you see that acronym a lot. But I want to say, I don't think any, or either of our new trustees have seen this. Do you have any questions about Spectrum or N P S? Any from you?
I think we did see Spectrum before.
Oh, we might have.
Aware of it.
All righty. Well, then I'd entertain a motion on item F, this master contract with Spectrum.
I move approval.
Moved by Trustee Rocha.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to ratify the master contract with Spectrum Antioch Non Public Schools passes five zero.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I'm not, okay, that was 11 J. Okay, yeah, we're on G. So I just got an extra comment, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it. So G is Memorandum of Understanding with California Partnerships for Achieving Student Success, Cal Pass Plus.
Yes, so this is, it is a memorandum of understanding. There's no cost, but it allows us to look at student data for employment over, it's, it's focused on C T E. So it's, I think, I must be a new vendor since it's no con, it has no cost. And so we just asked that the board approve.
Questions? I'm not seeing anything from my left. Any questions? I'd entertain a motion on item G.
I'll still move.
Moved approval by Trustee Hack.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can you call our roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with California Partnership for Achieving Student Success passes five zero.
Next up, we have item H, Service Agreement with Fresh Lifelines for Youth, which is FLY, on behalf of Bidwell High School.
Yes, so this item is here. I guess, again, it's no cost to the district, but it's, this organization works with our students at Bidwell and they do, you can see that's in there, really exposing students to the law and having different activities so that they can better understand the justice system. And so we ask that the board approve.
Questions on this side? None from Trustee Rocha? None from Trustee Dr. Lewis? Any questions? No? I would entertain a motion on the service agreement, item H.
And Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should have said something.
No, it's okay.
I like the tagline. It says, is, is disrupting the pipeline to prison. And it's something that has been, came up in our city and school meeting with the city. And that is a, we used to have a class where Wade Harper used to teach the rights of students. And this might be similar, and it's something that we're considering or interested in, and we will be bringing it back to you. But this kind of ties in with what we're asking, we're thinking that if students knew their rights and what would happen to them and what follows them, if they make a mistake, then they might reconsider. So I just want to add that to it.
And I'm still entertaining a motion.
Oh, I'm favorable.
So moved by Trustee Dr. Lewis. Is that a second? Trustee Rocha?
Yes, second.
All right. Seconded by Trustee Rocha to approve item H. Ms. Cavalero can call our roll.
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the services agreement with Fresh Lifelines for Youth passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item I, which is our service agreement with Sherri Marshall.
So this is a ratification of services with Sherri, who's providing services for students with, with the students with an IEP. And so we just ask that the board approve.
Any, any questions from folks or a motion?
I still move.
Move approval by Trustee Hack. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Hernandez. Ms. Cavalero, can you call the roll?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to ratify the services agreement with Sherri Marshall passes five zero.
All right. And then last up in our action items this evening, item J, which is our service agreement with Wellness Together, Inc., dbahereyou.org.
Okay, again, no cost to the district, but this is a new vendor that we'll be working with a number of our schools. And we just ask that you approve.
And then we do have a comment from Deb Hubbard.
I will let Deb take this one because this is her baby.
Thank you. I'm bored. I'm up here again, but I'll, I'll just be brief. I want you to know what you're voting on here. I also urge you to vote yes on item 11 J. I want you to know that the Wellness Culture and Climate Team really investigated Wellness Together and they are an outs-
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, Dr. Lewis, Joe, are you going to start my time off? No. Okay, it's okay. So it's all right.
Just start over, actually. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's, it's fine. I just want you to, thank you, Dr. Lewis. I want you to know that this organization specializes in therapy for education. So students, all facets of education. So our C S E A members, our AMA members, our A E A members, you know, healthy adults grow healthy children. And again, this is not a normal year. So it's awesome. The hearyou.org part is, is available for our staff members who, who find themselves in crisis and need some teletherapy, if you will. The Wellness Together is really the student part of this organization. Right now, because of COVID, the spots that are available in this grant that's free, but we're asking, you know, you just approved S R three, thank you very much, which will allow more teletherapy for our kids. This grant right here, because of COVID, it's going to be teletherapy for sixth grade through 12th grade. It's, we consulted with our counselors and they really felt that the younger kids, fifth grade and younger, need to have in-person therapy, if you will. This teletherapy will be via Zoom. Ms. Romeo has made sure that Joe has dedicated computers to the school sites that will get this first $75,000 grant with this, these, this organization. I just want you to know it's a great organization and they specialize in working with kids. They really understand it. They're not just therapy for everyone. So this is, this is excellent. And I just encourage you to approve it. And it'll be an awesome thing for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I, and I really appreciate you pointing out that staff will be able to receive sessions from this as well. That's really great to hear. So thank you for that additional information. Are there questions? I would also entertain a motion. Should we wait though, Joe? Because I know our internets were fine. Okay. Because we're recording.
All motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
Motion made by Trustee Hernandez to approve this item, item J, and seconded by Trustee Dr. Lewis. Can we get a roll call vote?
Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the services agreement with Wellness Together, Inc., dbahereyou.org passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to section 12, which is items for information, discussion, or action by the board. And we have quite a few this evening.
President Householder, I noticed Mr. Hack had to take a break for a moment. So I don't know if you want to pause, if we want to pause, I'll leave that to the board.
We might as well. Well, let's pause. Let's take a quick pause. Let's do, yeah, like three minutes? Okay, yeah, three minutes. That'll give us a couple- Let's do, yeah, like, three minutes? Okay, yeah, three minutes. That'll give us a couple...
...support policies. We went and looked at CSBA, who's kind of the clearinghouse for policies that we often use as a sample to bring before the board, and there were none. They did have an administrative rule, which is usually not something the board would develop, but we included it in here. And I think that's really strange. Usually you'll have a board policy, and then, which is the what, and then how staff is going to carry that out is contained in the AR. So, that is included here. So, the pertinent ed codes and penal codes are included in the sample AR, and I just need direction from the board how they would like to proceed. We also looked at several other districts to see if they had perhaps a policy, and we were unsuccessful in finding anyone, any.
And so, you know, just wanted to flag my item, which I have a little bit later, which is a policy regarding law enforcement interactions. I see these two as potentially being married, but I agree, I thought it is a little weird that there's not a board policy, but there is an administrative regulation. But I did think that there was enough in there to build out a board policy. Is there?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I believe so. If that's the direction of the board, I'd be happy to bring back a sample to have you all look at and provide input.
I got two head nods, a third head nod, a fourth, and a fifth.
Okay, I have direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. B, Board of Education Notification Policies and Procedures.
I believe this was brought forward by President Householder, and we were unable to find any written policies for other districts on notifications to the board, and also CSBA does not have a sample. So, I just need direction this evening. That's what the board's looking for, if anything.
So, what this is in regard to explicitly is just, or really, the question I was asking myself is how, like, how do we want to be notified of major incidents, and what are those, what is a major incident? And so, you know, I kind of just leave it up to the board of like, you know, we, I think codifying things in board policy and coming up with specific procedures on how we want that to take place is always a good thing, rather than the kind of like, well, we did it sometimes, and we don't do it others. And I think within policies and procedures, and I honestly think this could be an addendum or in addition to our communications board policy. That's the place I saw it fit most naturally. And, you know, within that, I thought there could be, you know, maybe a subpoint about, you know, for major incidents where police were called, for example, or where APD was involved. Maybe that's something that we're notified. And I know that we are notified about everything, but I just thought it was a smart idea to just talk about that now and codify that in policy, if that was, if that sounded good to folks. Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely would agree that. I think it'd be great to put this into policy, because even now, I mean, we get messages from the superintendent when certain events happen to keep us up to date, and it'd be great to just, you know, formalize that this is a process that happens and have a basis for, you know, our board or future boards to work off of, if that feels like that's exhaustive and capturing what needs to be captured.
And I think it also provides us sort of a platform to...
And this is trustee Dr. Lewis.
So, I think it also provides us a platform to understand, because again, so, we're a board of education over K-12, and, you know, we are dealing with youth. So, there are certain restrictions in terms of passing along information and sort of having access to information. So, it's important that we lay these things out so that we're all on the same page when we are engaging with that, with that content. So, you know, I think that it would be very helpful.
Trustee Rocha? I mean, I know we're still kind of talking a little bit vague, but just general first thoughts about being, coming up with a policy, codifying...
Well, notifications for me would be that we're all on the same page. I think that's what we're hearing. No surprises, no, you know, I mean, but it's major things. Schools on fire, there's a break-in or something, a major break-in. Nothing that is incidental, that the superintendent has to take care of. Something major that's going to hit the TV.
And to that point, I think it's important that we define major.
Well, something's going to hit the TV. It would be, you know, I don't know what they consider major.
But, you know, and I think that's an important point, because, you know, what's major to one person may not necessarily be considered major to another. So, if we have sort of a framework to say, these are some things that could be considered major that the board might want to hear, you know, that gives us a baseline.
I can, I'm happy to bring back, because I saw already three heads nodding. I'm happy to bring back a notification policy. I would ask the board also, if we can, if they're in agreement, I'd like to include that the board also notifies staff if they have information, and not to assume that maybe staff has that information. That would be great.
Madam Chair, in fact, that did happen to me, and I brought it to the attention. It was really, in the neighborhood, you know how you have that neighborhood thing in your computer?
Yeah, next door.
Yeah, and it was something that they weren't aware of, and so I brought it to their attention. That's my part in participating, and then they investigated and took a look at it.
And trustee Rocha, that brings up a very interesting point, because then also, I know we're responsible for kiddos from school to home and vice versa. So, sometimes we may be aware of something that the school district is not.
Correct.
Simply because of our position in the community and things like that. So, it's important that we outline these things.
Yeah, but the first item, the first person you have to address that is to your employee, which is the superintendent. We don't have any control on the rest of the members of the staff, just the superintendent, and then she follows through on whatever is necessary.
Yeah, and I mean, from the sounds of it, from just y'all's conversation, I mean, it's already the practice that's being done, but let's just put it, write it down. But I wanted to ensure trustee Hernandez, if you had anything, you know, that you would want to see in this policy, I mean, from the sounds of it, it should probably be standalone. My idea of including it in communications might become too convoluted, but is there anything else, trustee Hernandez, to think about with this?
I mean, nothing that's coming to mind immediately. I think it's more about building a base for this, and then, you know, using the experiences that we're having in the community to kind of modify that as needed, because I'm sure, you know, whatever we come up with first is going to miss something that may be like, oh, we, maybe we should be more on top of getting notified about this and that. But I think just starting with a policy, and then, you know, we can always modify policy.
You know, for me, time, like, the method of it being sent to us, so time, method, and then, like, what is major, you know, and I would just leave that up to staff who's developing this. Trustee Hack, is there any other considerations or thoughts on this? Obviously, it's going to be brought back to us.
I have confidence in the superintendent to come up with a rough draft, and we can look at and modify it if we so choose.
Awesome. Okay, that was easy. Superintendent Anello, do you have enough info?
I do, thank you.
So, moving on, we have a board policy on the use of social media by trustees. So, this is trustee Rocha. Take it away.
Okay. Actually, this is not only coming from me, but it was coming from the community. And there is a policy pertaining to this, and I just wanted to reaffirm and speak to it so that we're aware of what it says. And this is the policy 9000, board bylaws, public statement, board policy, and it says, "When speaking to community groups, members of the public or the media, the individual board member should recognize that their statement may be perceived as reflecting the views and positions of the board. Board members have a responsibility to identify personal viewpoints as such and not as a viewpoint of the board." Then the other portion in here says, "In addition, the board encourages members who participate in social networking sites, blogs, or other discussions or informational sites to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and professional manner, and to model good behavior of district, for district students and the community. Such electronic communications are subject to the same standards and protocol established by other forms of communication, and the disclosure requires of the California Public Records Act may likewise apply to them." So, we need to hold ourselves to the policy here, and there's been some issues that have come up that we're not following our own policy, and that's why I'm bringing it up. And it was encouraged by community people that was, that had addressed the, actually, this district.
And we have some public comments. Do we want to move to public comment and then come back for discussion? Okay. So, first up, we have Melissa Case. And you have 12C, D, and F, I'm guessing, for every one, right? Just one.
I spoke with Ms. Case when I saw that and created new cards for...
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, perfect. Ms. Case?
So, thank you, Mary Rocha. I was one of the people that reached out to you about social media policy. I think the board should adhere to that, but because social media has grown so much, I think we need to come up with some more rules, especially people silencing other people on their public page. Ellie Householder, you have blocked comments, you have deleted comments, you have blocked people that have an interest in that. And I've never ever called you a name, for being snarky, and I missed your dad jokes. But I think we should include that on that, because it's been through the court already, and it's a violation of my First Amendment rights and every other parent's First Amendment rights. So, I also want to thank Antonia. I've set stuff on your page, and thank you for not blocking me. Thank you for listening. I appreciate that. I still think you owe the community an apology for misstating. But other than that, I really do enjoy you on the board, and that's great. That's about it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Lindsay Amesqua. I'm so sorry, I keep saying your last name wrong.
...this evening. The Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, commonly known as FERPA, is a federal law enacted in 1974 to protect the rights and private, protect the privacy of students and their educational records. A photo or video is in fact considered a student's educational record, subject to specific inclusion, if their student's privacy is violated in such a manner, and that the board bylaws reflect any disciplinary actions that would take place if this policy is violated. Thank you again for your time this evening, and remember, we are AUSD.
And so, trustee Rocha, so, the public statement board policy has social media in it. So, what are you asking the board?
I'm asking the board to adhere to the policy that when we're out in public, you, we don't represent all of us. We only represent ourselves, and we need to make sure that that is explained. That's very important. And I have a problem with when someone goes forward and speaks and not identifies who they represent, if it's just themselves, or they just happen to be a member, but they also are a member of other things. So, that's why. And the policy's here, it's very clear. And I'm not the only one that has brought this up. It was brought in from the community, and so, I'm just a vehicle of what they were trying to get across to us. You already have a policy, so then just carry it out.
One of the things I do is I have in my bio on all different social media platforms in, you know, bold letters at the top. All views on this page are explicitly my own, because it is difficult. I think people see us, and, you know, it's hard to decouple the two, but when that's right there at the top, you know, I think that that's, at least for me, that's the best, that's what I've seen practiced that other elected officials use. But it's just, it seems like an FYI, but I wanted to see if there's any other thoughts, ideas on this. No?
I would like to add that there's also, related to that, a board policy on professional standards, and I would encourage the board to review that, so they are acting in the most ethical way and maintaining the highest standards. Thank you.
Thank you. And social media, I think I saw that in there too, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, next up, trustee Rocha, is that okay?
Here's my other item here.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure before moving on. So, the other item is the censure of board president Ellie Householder.
And I'd like to read a few things before I go any further, because I'm going to ask for a motion. But, you know, it's been, I'm just going to read this out, and I'm going to tell you, that since you've been the chair, there's been nothing but disruption. You encourage protesters who try to intimidate a council member to vote a certain way. In fact, not only did you encourage it, you participated in the protests early on. You encouraged a protester to, at the district office, which resulted in some of your friends breaking into the building, destroying district facilities, and pushing it, and resulted in two board members and one employee getting injured. You were censured for further encouraging your friends to intimidate board members in order to push your agenda. You posted and applauded your friends on social media for screaming F. Gary, F. Mary, F. Diane repeatedly. You participated in a taped forum when the moderator spent over an hour saying horrible things about our superintendent, and many of which were lies, and rather than a correctum or offer the truth, you said, "I like where this is going." Most recently, you posted a video on your social media that you've been hearing about, that included the faces of our students and insinuated, excuse me, insinuated staff had mistreated the student, yet you never asked about the facts. If I were the parent, I would be furious. Finally, you call a ridiculous meetings, special meetings, asking the superintendent to violate employee and student's privacy rights as well as board policy. And on top of that, the many meetings that you've called that have not resulted in anything but a cost of a lawyer's time. So, at this point, I'm putting a motion in that to adopt a resolution for censor, and that is to come back with the forum met, if the board agrees.
We do have several public comments, but...
Can I have a second on that motion before you have your public comments?
Yeah. Is there a second on the, the motion on the table is to adopt an immediate resolution?
I heard come back.
Come back with a resolution for censor.
Okay, so that's the resolution, or, sorry, the motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, then we'll move on to public comment. I know that's...
Now, you can go to public comments, and then we go.
Very out of order. So, first up, we have Crystal Van Dyke, and then we have Lindsay Amesqua. So, Crystal up first, and then Lindsay up next.
Good evening again to the Board of Education, Superintendent Anello, all in attendance. Again, my name is Crystal Van Dyke, teacher at Mission Elementary, current AUSD Teacher of the Year, and a proud parent of a current AUSD student and a past AUSD student. I am speaking on this item in support of censor, of censuring Ellie Householder yet again for her numerous inappropriate social media posts and comments during board meetings. I am not going to review the things that have been said and/or posted. I would like to just post an example. As a teacher, I am told to be very careful about what I post on my social media accounts. I need to make sure that I don't post pictures or videos of students, do not use their names, make sure that whatever I post is appropriate for what my job entails, even if it may be during my own personal time. As an elected official, I would think that common sense would say that it should be the same. Elected officials' social media pages, especially school board members, should reflect positivity and neutrality. On a different point, because we live in the United States, the land of the free, during board meetings, there is no dictator. Every member of the board, every cabinet member in attendance, and every community and staff member has the right to speak. Speaking over and telling them that they are not recognized goes against every fiber of our government. I think what needs to happen is Ellie should stay away from social media, including TikTok, and study up on the Roberts Rules of Order and the Brown Act. That might be a better use of her time. Thank you.
Next up, we have Lindsay Amesqua. And then Beatrice Hernandez after that.
Good evening once again, boards of trustees, Superintendent Anello. My name is Lindsay Amesqua, and I once again thank you for recognizing me this evening. On October 11th, 2021, at 12:35 PM, a letter was sent to Superintendent Anello and CC to Vice President Dr. Lewis. I'm going to read you an excerpt of that email at this time. "Good afternoon, Superintendent Anello. We, the undersigned, are writing in to request the following items be added to the October 27th, 2021 Board of Education meeting." 27th, 2021 Board of Education meeting, as allowed by ED Code 35145.5. Our first requested addition to this is the censuring of President Householder. Her escalating attacks on parents, teachers, and staff is unbecoming of a school board trustee. We have been called disgusting and hostile, made fun of with passive aggressive repost of skits, and have had our concerns dismissed as cyberbullying. I read you this email tonight so that it is clear to all of you that trustee Rocha is not acting alone in this second request for the censuring of trustee Householder. She is listening to her constituents that are demanding better than getting called names, being made fun of, being belittled, and getting dismissed. Bullying constituents should never be tolerated, and we request immediate action to stop the attacks. As always, we are AUSD.
Beatrice Hernandez, and then Daniel Hernandez. I'm just doing one and then the next person.
Good evening, Board. I'm here today to urge you all to dismiss the item to censure President Householder. If this item actually does come to a vote and no isn't a simple enough response for you all, then might I suggest postponing this item for 60 days? Because it's clear to me that none of the actions against President Householder these past couple of months have ever actually been about anything more than personal issues between trustee Rocha and President Householder. To spend a month away from the board and continue carrying on with this item without any effort to reconcile is beyond childish. Trustee Rocha is requesting that the board censure President Householder for her escalating negativity, yet only Householder has included items on the agenda that actually pertain to students in this district directly. I agree that accountability is necessary to maintaining a functioning organization, but there is a difference between calling out President Householder for her shortcomings as president and calling for her removal just because you don't like her. We had a mountain of comments pour in when it was suggested that the board should conduct its standard annual evaluation of the superintendent, all because people complained there were no goals or parameters set yet, as far, set yet. And as far as the public is aware, I've never seen any attempt by trustee Rocha, Hack, or even the superintendent to actually ever talk to President Householder without a hidden agenda. So to include this item in the same meeting when you are discussing the addition of a board governance consultant is an empty gesture at best. I'm sure at this point, we're all exhausted by this bi-weekly dissent into nonsense. Please remember that there are actual children and families that are out there that currently need your help, because if by this point, they're not your top priority, then maybe it's time to realize that you may have overstayed your welcome. Thank you.
Next up, we have Daniel Hernandez, and then Melissa Case after Daniel.
Good evening, Board. Hello, I want to ask the board to please remove this item from the agenda. I'm extremely disappointed on the amount of the board's time that has been wasted on this silly infighting. Meanwhile, students continue to struggle. You're voting on a board governance consultant today. Are you really going to do this the same day you're censuring someone on this board? That's like getting divorced before you're going to a marriage counselor. I hope this board can move past this and start to actually make a difference in students' lives. Please stop this, please.
All right, next up, we have Melissa Case, and then we have Willie Mims. And it looks like maybe one, so Melissa Case.
I'm choosing to recognize you right now, Ellie, even though I don't want to. There was a time I did support you. I actually voted for you. We had a conversation before you were elected, and you had ideas, fresh ideas, ideas I didn't think that would work, but ideas that I enjoyed listening to you put forth to improve the school district. This school district's been broken way before you. I have not always agreed with Anello. Charter schools, same with Rocha. I don't always approve of their spending, and that was a big item for you, and that's the reason I voted for you instead of Rocha way back when. So when you first acted up, you kind of pulled back. Clyde encouraged me to trust him, stuff like that. I was not happy that I voted for you. That's actually the shocker, probably for everyone around me. I appreciated you because you had a conversation with me about our school district. I do care about Antioch as a whole, and that includes the school district. But you have continued to censure people in our community, people with kids in the school, people, just regular people without kids in the school, and you continue to do so. So you're censuring us. Why shouldn't we censure you? You say, everyone says, oh, we want to stop the drama. You started it. I'm, I want them to censure you. I'm tired of being censured by you. And I've said positive things about you. I can say positive things about you right now. I appreciated the fact that you put everyone on Zoom, and I know some people had to be kicking and screaming to do that. I appreciated that. I like watching the board meetings. It made the board meetings enjoyable to watch, even when there was a positive, not the drama, I'm just saying the positive stuff. I appreciated that about you. There's, when you first, before you were president, you were like line item, everything on, on all the spreadsheets and stuff. I appreciated that about you, taking financial responsibility over everything. There are things I appreciate you about. What I don't appreciate you for is the childish nature. I'm probably going to sign the recall now because you blocked me. You censured me. Before that, I don't care if you're on the board or not. Step down from president, you're not qualified to lead right now. That's, that's what I have to say. Censured or no censured, step down.
All right, next up, we have Willie Mims, and then after that, we have Velma Wilson.
Yes, to the board, I, I was somewhat, you know, I saw this censor again, and I thought that it was, you know, the wrong thing to do. I'm sorry, you can't hear me? Oh, okay. Well, let me talk a little louder then. I said that I, in looking at your agenda, I did see on it that Ms. Householder was being, was being requested to be censored again. And I'm not, I'm totally against this. You know, I've listened to some of the folks who came up here and had the audacity to talk about how she has censured them. Well, I have been watching and observing these, these, your board meetings on Zoom. She has faced the most concerted attack that I've ever come across in my life. At every board meeting, you have three to 400 people get on, get on the call. Some of them, some of them who didn't even have the guts to state their names to who they were. And so they're calling this, calling this young lady all these names. So you, you should look into the mirror and ask yourself, what did you do? Did you respect this young lady? No, you did not. You can't, you can't sit up here and lie and say that you did. In terms of the attack, you said that she attacked parents? What parents? What people did she attack? Give us some names instead of making all these generalization type statements. But anyway, I, I come up here to support President Householder. I think you're doing a good job. You just, you just have not had an opportunity to, to, to do some of the things that you want to do, because you've had, you've had, you've come across chaos who resent, and they hate you for, for what you've been doing and trying to do since you became the board president. They hate you when you, because when you first stood up for Crystal Sawyer White, a young black lady, you know, they hate you for that. They hate you when you stood up because you were so concerned about the children, about, about the misuse of force on, on some of these school campuses. And so you tried to call a meeting, what did, what did they do? They attacked you. So you, so keep doing what you're doing, because these people didn't vote for you in the first place. Thank you.
Next up, we have, we have Velma Wilson, and then Jake Van Dyke.
Good evening again. So I do want to make Mary very, very clear. I did vote for you, Ellie, some years ago. I actually talked with you and Shakufa and told you, why would I support one over the other? And I encouraged both of you not to run together. We had that conversation, said in many of LCAP meetings, and super proud of the work that you were doing as an intern at the district office. I supported you, you supported me, you were my cheerleader, you were like, oh, I'm so happy to have one parent that is definitely doing about it. Ask me if I, if I feel the same, if you feel that same way about Velma Wilson today? Because I received a message, as Mr. Mims just said, that what a parent have you, what parent have you attacked? Well, I'm standing here. You left me a message that said that I should be ashamed of being a black woman. Willie Mims, you still cheering for her? But there's no shame here. I have nothing to be ashamed about. I said I was going to say this earlier, I am still standing. Despite your differences, despite whatever, I just really want to know, what really have you done as you sat on this here board to put positive outcomes to help our students? The students that you say, Black Lives Matter, you so woke, but you didn't even know what Juneteenth was. You counter protested against that youth that was following you. You were, you were mentor, you were her mentor and didn't even realize it. Ask her how she feels today. She is ashamed. Because you counter protested against that youth who's still serving this here community. She did a school supply giveaway. Did you come? Absolutely not. Have you been at any of the African-American Parent Advisory Committee meetings? Nope. Have you been to any of the three, the three, out of the three BSU meetings that we have? Have you been to any of them? But you say you support students of color. Thank you, Dr. Clyde Lewis, because yes, you have been there. You have been an active participant of what's happening today in this here schools. Test scores are still going up, but it ain't because of you, it's because of that woman right there and her leadership. So Ellie, yes, I support you being censured, because enough is enough.
All right, next up, we have Jake Van Dyke.
Hi, my name is Jake Van Dyke. Thank you for letting me speak today. That's going to be a hard act to follow. I just want to give you the definition, definition of a censure. It's express, express severe disapproval of someone or something, especially in a formal statement, or the expression of formal disapproval. I want to bring this to you guys, that definition exactly, because she has already been censured one time. If we go through with this censorship again, that's two marks against her. If you want to talk about evaluating anybody on this board or superintendent, that's two marks against her if you go through with this, and I strongly encourage you to go through with this. She attacks people on social media, she silences people on social media, she's blocked me on social media from her Antioch Unified School Board District page. If you're going to take away people's free speech on social media, that's taking away their freedom. Censuring her is the best thing to do tonight, so please go forward with that.
Any more comments on this item? Doesn't look like it. Okay. You know, I guess really, I mean, there's, there's a lot to unpack with this, but the one thing I just will say, is just thinking about, let's divorce myself from it, process, right? We haven't come up with a set of parameters. So if we're really, you know, moving in that direction of codifying things and having, you know, actually having a roadmap in what we do, whether that's censorship, or whether that's, you know, giving out a grant, whatever it is, we have to have a policy and we have to have a procedure, and we don't. And, you know, this, this does feel deeply, deeply personal. And, you know, I don't take offense to it. I think everybody has the right to their own opinion, but I just don't think that this belongs on, this doesn't belong on our school board. So I don't think that this is a discussion that we should have here. I was elected by the people, and we're not in the business of punishing each other. Otherwise, I would just be censuring everybody all of the time, right? But we don't do that. We disagree and we move on. Melissa, Ms. Case, please, I've, I've really dealt with your alpers. I'm trying to be very kind, but please. So any other comments? Or, I mean, I guess I can leave this, or kick it back to trustee Rocha.
Madam Chair, I'm calling for the vote. I have the motion on the floor. I have a second, there's been discussion, and now I'm ready for the vote.
I just want to give trustee Hernandez and trustee Dr. Lewis just a quick second here. Go trustee Dr. Lewis.
This is, I mean, it's an unpopular conversation anytime you're talking about punishing someone on, on either side. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. It's an unpopular and uncomfortable conversation when you're talking about punishing someone on either side. You know, and I'm thinking about when we, when we are working with young folks, and, you know, anybody that knows me knows that, you know, if there's questions around how much time I spend in the school, you know, I'm there all the time. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm an imprint. Students know me, teachers know me, faculty know me, I'm there. And when I talk to some students, actually, I, there's a young man that I'm thinking of that I mentored. If not given, the, how do I say this? This young man was counted out. This young man had done everything, he broken rules and all these different things, but with the proper supports, that young man is now in college. You know, people that know me personally know that I don't talk about the, the work that I do in the community and things like that. And the reason I mention all, all of this is because it's important that we understand the population that we're supporting, the youth and all those different things. We have to acknowledge a dissenting voice, we may not agree with it. You know what? I'm going to stop right there. Antonia, or trustee Hernandez.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that this is a challenging conversation and that there is, I think it's easy to break things up into binaries, but there is, you know, validity in those feelings that a lot of people are in support of this censure feeling. There is absolutely things that we as a board, that us as individuals and collective can be doing better to be better board members, that have added to some of this animosity at times, that have made things more challenging. And I think, you know, there's a number of comments that were today at different points and including right now, about finding ways to work together, about finding ways to come together as a board. I think it's easy to forget all the things that happened throughout a year and think about the different ways that our dynamics have changed. There was, we were all at the AEA retirement dinner at the same table, and there's definitely been, and we were happy and we were talking and having conversation with each other. And there's been times this year where I, where some people can't imagine being in the same room as other people. And so I think because we have those kinds of experiences, it shows that we have the capability to come together as a board. One of the things that I think is a little bit unfortunate about the ways that government can work at times is that some of our best moments have been during closed session and that the public's not there to see that, that, at those times have been some of the times where some of the, the most challenging conversations have been had, and it'd be great if there was a way for the public to be able to see those pieces. But there is very, yeah, deep issues on this board that we've worked through, not completely for sure, and that are still, we're still working through. And we do have as our next item on here, hiring a board governance consultant, and I think it's just not in good faith to censure someone on the board and kind of drive home that animosity right before we're trying to deal with this on another level. And then I think functionally, you know, I'm not sure if that's going to push us, that would push us in the right direction anyway, because, you know, the way that, that elected officials work is we censure her and she's, you know, she's still here, we still have to work with our different colleagues here, and we'd have to work through these personal differences anyway, so I'd rather not find ways to, to jump on them. But I also, again, want to acknowledge that, you know, I think a lot of these things, it's just so hard to disentangle things because there are very real, very valid criticisms about how this school board's been run, about the different things that we've done. And we need to talk about those things without accidentally mixing in some of these more personal pieces, because that's, I think, where we get lost, and that's where we end up losing our mission to help students. So that's my perspective on there, and I know people are going to disagree, but, you know, as best as I can say, and I know it's hard, especially if you don't agree with me, but as best as I can say, you know, I'm trying to hear you. me, but as best as I can say, you know, I'm trying to hear you.
Any other questions, concerns?
I think I've made it very clear that what has happened in the whole year since you've taken over is there's been disruption. You've put, used your media to allow things to be said and done against people. And you certainly have criticized our staff, who we are responsible for, in a sense, and it shouldn't be. I brought a couple of items before, I couldn't be heard, and I did the process correctly, and I still was not heard. And you had, you, I'm just saying, your chairmanship has not been a positive one. And I admire you as an individual, very educational, but I don't admire your tactics, because it seems like you're putting yourself above all of us. And you're using your thorn, or your crown, or whatever you want to call it, to be above us and run the shop like you want it and not include us. Because it certainly, you can't be included when you go out there and speak on your own behalf and make it look like we're supporting what you're saying, when we don't have that support and you've never asked us for that support. That's why I'm bringing it up for a censor. You've already been censored once. This is just an issue that has been brewing and brewing, and you have not taken heed, even after I have tried to displace you as the chair. You would have understood that, what was going on. And yet you went around and you still put that student, without even asking anybody, staff, what was going on. You automatically decided that was what you were going to do, because you were the chair.
Wait, with what? Sorry.
The student that was at the school, that was, that we talked about here, that you didn't even, you disregarded the students' face and the kids, and everybody was there, and you put it on your Facebook, on your page. And when you put it on your page, it's the school board page. It's just not the personal page of yours. You don't exclude that. So you ended thinking, well, it's the president of the board that's making the statements. So that's why I call for the motion at this point.
Just in direct response, I will 100% call for the motion, not arguing against you, just saying things from my perspective. I do understand that my leadership style is, you know, sometimes maybe heavy-handed at times, but it's my belief that this board has gotten way off the rails, and rather than us leading the district, the district has been leading us. And so if I've ever come across as a little overly heavy-handed, that's why, you know? And I'm not going to apologize for it, because it's my, I can't go back, right? We can only move forward. And also just, you know, a quick note, a lot of the things that you didn't know, I don't disagree, but they were before I was board president. So, but the point about the video, that's totally valid. But again, you know, for me, it's me trying to get us to be the board that provides the oversight, because that's what the people elected us to do. And I get, like, we disagree, but it seems like every time we disagree, it's remove, it's censure, it's all of these, like, really nasty things, when I think we could work it out. I really do. And, you know, I've never been, Ms. Case, please, I'm going to ask you to leave, Ms. Case. I have to ask you to leave. I'm sorry. We are having a meeting in public, not with the public, so please leave. Ms. Case, please leave the auditorium. I've asked you now multiple times. Ms. Case, you keep having these outbursts. We are not having a meeting with the public, we're having a meeting in public. So I talked to my board members, and you keep having these outbursts. Ms. Case, I'm going to have to ask you to leave again. Do we have any security here? Because this is, can somebody help escort Ms. Case out of the auditorium, please?
I just feel compelled to really caution on case law that it has to be a substantial disruption that causes the board not to be able to continue. So I would like the board to weigh that. So if it's not a substantial disruption, then, and the board can continue during their work, I'd like the board to consider that.
Certain alpers, we want to keep through. Okay. Like I said, you know, I think it's just a matter of me, my leadership style just doesn't resonate with everybody on this board. The reality is, is I'm fully committed to working with everybody here, and even despite this, I'm fully committed to moving forward and getting our consultant. I've never held anything against anybody, I really haven't. And I really haven't been, I don't think disrespectful to any of my board members while we've been heavy-handed, yes, but I've not been mean and I haven't acted in bad faith. And if you look at my social media, I have been told time and time again, I am the most, like, I put out the most information by some people in this audience, who have said that I am the only trustee that puts out information on their social media. Now I get it. And I've grown at every step of the way. After that last censure, that's when I put all views on here expressly my own. Because even though I didn't agree with it, I still respect you, you know, and I changed my behavior. If we think that I'm being negative, let's talk about it, you know? But to just force this issue when there's been a month, you know, since this even happened, and it's because I'm negative, again, it is completely within your right, but I just think it's very counterproductive to the direction that we're going in. But I fully respect your viewpoints on it. I'm not trying to say it in contrary to you. I'm saying this is an "and" statement. So, yeah. The vote? Trustee Hack? Oh, wait, can we remind us that the motion on the table is to bring back the resolution? Sorry, I just wanted to.
Do you want to find what that means?
So, yeah, I mean, what does that mean, trustee Rocha?
It means that to bring it back is bringing back the resolution to censor the chairman. And that means that if we agree, it comes back with the items of censorship.
For a vote.
For a vote. For a vote. It comes back for a vote. This one is just to get it going.
So this is just to put it on the agenda?
Just to put it on the agenda for next time.
And then we'll have to have this conversation all again. Trustee Hack? Sorry, Ms. Cavalero. You take it away. Trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
No.
President Householder?
No.
Vice President Lewis?
I'm going to abstain. And the reason why I'm abstaining is, I think that we should, I think this conversation needs to happen after we have the consultant.
And trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion does not pass two to two with Dr., Vice President Dr. Lewis abstaining.
Is abstaining a no? Question. Is abstaining a no?
The motion dies at two-two.
No, but I'm saying, is, just a question, is abstaining a no vote?
No.
Okay. Just double check.
It's a nothing vote. Sorry.
But what that typically means is that in the situation where we wanted to bring this back, then that only, I mean, it couldn't be brought back, because there's not three of us. So that's the only thing. But we could still talk about, I mean, I think, policy. Sorry, I'm talking totally out of turn.
Madam Chair, for my last statement is, I have made an effort several times to, because of the issues that have been coming up, and they haven't been slowed down, to displace you as the chair, because I think as an individual board member, you've done some good jobs. But I think when you became a chair, you just changed your attitude and your direction and your ability to do a good job with all of us. So what I'm getting at is I've lost the two votes before on getting you off. Now I'm losing this one on censor. I just want to be clear that I've brought it to the attention of the rest of you. I'm willing to have a consultant. I've never denied that. But I wanted to clear the air and make sure that you understood how the community feels and how it feels to be a board member under your direction. That's all I was trying to do to you. But it didn't seem to shake you up on the first time. Didn't happen on the second, and now for sure on the third time. So thank you.
It's okay. So this dovetails very nicely into board governance. So Ms. Anello, can you introduce this item for us?
Yes, as you will recall, the board asked that we bring forward consultants to work with the board on governance, as well as on the process for the superintendent's evaluation. We, it took a while to hear back from some of these, but we finally heard from what we think is a good cadre for the board to look at and to select. And so I just need direction this evening on which one of these the board would like to move forward with.
Is our internet back up? Because I know we had the resumes. I forgot to download it. Or somebody has them.
Yeah, I was a little hesitant to put them all up, because they have some personal information.
Okay.
That's why we sent them to the board.
I just didn't download it.
But does anyone need a copy?
I do, need a copy. I just want to see the names, and I can tell you why. What's the one?
The gentleman that I'm in support is the first one, because he's worked with, he's worked with us in Black Diamond. He's also telling you exactly how much an hour it is and not a flat rate. And he has a wonderful resume background, so I support that one that I have there.
No, John. So the one that I support is...
I'm sorry, for the record, Ms. Rocha, can you say which?
Oh, the name of, John.
John C. Bernard.
John, because he's worked with us and he's given us a straight account of how much it is an hour, and he has a huge resume.
And I am going to go with what was suggested to us during one of our last evaluation conversations, and that is Dana Tom. And that's because when he was kind of, you know, introduced to us in a way or explained to us, we would be able to do both, like, our own kind of governance, our own getting on the same page, as well as the superintendent evaluation. So that's why I was going to go with Dana, who is the one that was suggested to us. Yeah, and I just also, I mean, honestly, the CSBA, I feel like, just given that we follow their templates a lot, I just think it makes sense too to stay with CSBA. Do you have any leanings?
I really feel better, the reason I think that at least he's given us by the hour and not a flat rate, at least we can control how much time we want to spend. And his background, you could take all three of them, they all have similar backgrounds, and, but he has worked with us at Black Diamond, so he knows our school, he has a background for it. And I just felt more comfortable with his background, resume. Yeah, Bernard.
I do believe one of the distinct, I'm so sorry, I believe one of the distinctions that does make him somewhat of a unique candidate is he's been a state-appointed superintendent, which means that he's been appointed to go into school districts and manage things when things are not going well, so.
Do you, trustee Hernandez, do you?
Yeah, I'm happy to share. I also do like Dana Tom. I think, I think in particular, there's a couple of experiences that he has that I think are really helpful in our particular situation. I think when I was looking at these, I definitely looked at who had CSBA experience, because, I mean, the California School Board Association is really where all of the information of how school boards in this state are running kind of come together, and it's where the best practices are really developed. So that was kind of one of the first things on there. The second thing is that Dana Tom served on the Palo Alto Unified School District Board for nine years, and, you know, as I was looking into it, he served during a time working on also a very tumultuous and some challenging things going on in that school district. And I think that, you know, I saw some parallels with some of the things that we're experiencing here. I also think that having the experience of working on a school board and then now working also on best practices with the California School Board Association is really touching on a lot of the issues that we have here. And I'll provide a slightly different perspective on why I like the flat rate fee schedule is because oftentimes, we've taken much longer to discuss issues than we anticipated, and these conversations have been very long at times. And having that rate and knowing what we're getting, I think, puts us at a good point to make sure that we really do work through these issues and that we're not feeling this negative pressure of, well, let's finish this sooner, let's finish this sooner, so that we don't use up as much money. So that's some of my thoughts of why I think Dana Tom in particular stood out to me.
And then I just got a public comment, but I wanted to just, trustee Hack, do you have, would you rather hear the comment and then kind of state which one you're kind of leaning towards, or do you have a favorite?
I'm leaning very directly towards Bernard.
You're leaning towards Bernard?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got like, kind of, it's like half and half. So trustee Lewis?
Yeah, so, you know, I think both Bernard, oh, that might help, right? I think both Bernard and Tom are...
Or Dana.
Are probably, you know, my two favorite, but I am leaning towards John Bernard. And the reason is, you know, being sort of the visiting committee chairperson, you know, that's understanding the intricacies of an education institution, and that's something that, and he's done it for, what, 17 years? You know, that's something that sort of governs and guides the way that school districts are run, and he understands, from his experience, it seems like he may understand some of the nuances that we're trying to get at. So that's kind of why I'm leaning towards John C. Bernard.
Yeah, I guess the last thing I'll say about Dana is just also the kind of tech experience I think he brings, which is just something to consider as well, because we theoretically will be developing goals with this. But let me, so it sounds like we've kind of got a direction, but let me go to the public comment, and we'll explore this again. So we have Mr. Mims.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, and that is, you know, you have some documents in your possession that the public does not have. And so, unless some of it is private, then the people have a right to have what you have in your possession. So I don't know what you're reading. I see you, and I know you passed out some documents, and you're talking about flat rate fees and all this other stuff. That's not in your staff report, and so it's problematic for me, because when I'm reading over this, I'm looking at the requirements and everything else. But I don't have what you have. And so, so can I get a copy? I mean, you can leave out the personal stuff, but I need a copy of what you have, because that's the right, the people have access to the people's business. So once you get something in your possession, we're supposed to have it too. The other things that, you know, I worked with Mr. Bernard in the past, but I would like to, you know, I'm not going to have, I don't have anything positive, negative to say, you know, but the, my concern is, when I look at, when you're hiring someone and you're talking about a name, and then you're talking about two names, and I don't have, and when I look at your staff report, those names are not there, and their resume is not there, or some parts of their resume or experience is not there. So I find that to be problematic. So that's my concern, is that you have a document in your possession that I do not have, and I'd like to have a copy of something that you have up there, because it is my right under the California Public Records Act. Thank you.
And we actually have three. So the one that doesn't seem like any of us are leaning towards is Terry Vigil, who's also from CSBA. So we've got kind of two CSBA folks who it doesn't seem like we've worked with before, and then John C. Bernard, who we have. Another thing about Dana as well is he's a person of color, and I know that that's like, kind of lower on the totem pole in terms of importance and the experience it brings, but I do think that given the diversity of our district, it would be nice to have a person of color. But it's, but any differences? Would you feel good with Bernard? Or I don't even know. I mean, are we, in regards to Mr. Mims' concern, you know, I wasn't aware that these weren't included, so I don't know how we would proceed from that.
It would be a cure and correct. So we can go ahead. He's absolutely right, it occurred to me at the same time, as the board members are passing along papers. So he's correct, it's a cure and correct. So anyone who would like a copy of that, we'll certainly provide it for them.
Thank you. Okay. No, we can, so a cure and correct is just basically he brought out that we kind of did something wrong, and then he'll, and then they'll post it. Any other feelings? Do you want to vote?
No, I have consensus.
Yeah, I'd rather us reach consensus, I think, especially given this item.
Yep.
Consensus was four.
Was, yes. I have three for Mr. Bernard and two for Dana Tom, so.
Yeah, because I think I'll stay, like, I think any one of these three people seems great. But, you know, if I have to make a choice, you know, that's just where my preference is, but I think, you know, so if whatever majority of people are thinking, I'm happy to support that and go along with that.
Awesome. All right, so moving right along, item F, which is a policy regarding law enforcement interaction with students. So my colleagues might remember... So my colleagues might remember during one of our, during a meeting that we had with a parent, there was a concern that was brought up that a police officer had spoken to her middle-aged son and, without her knowing. And so, from the looks of it, we have, it seems like there are, in our handbook, the student-parent handbook, there are some mentions of this kind of policy regarding law enforcement interactions, but I was hoping that we can codify what we want that to look like or kind of the parameters for that in a board policy. So, I mean, this is just based on what, you know, a parent had brought up to us. So I don't know if there's other things that folks remember that is pertinent, I mean...
Madam Chair, I don't understand, because I know we don't have our police on the system in our school district, so what is it that we're talk, you know, what you're saying?
So it's just to explore what a policy would look like for police interaction, so we don't currently have one.
On campus?
On camp, oh, interactions with students specifically.
But where?
Where? On campus, yes, on campus, on school.
But isn't that, we have our own security, I mean, our own people, and there's a policy that they've, or rules that they have to follow, correct?
There are, there's also laws that law enforcement follows that are codified in that. So, for example, it changed a couple of years ago that they have to have permission from the parent to interact with the child or to have the district attorney present while interviewing a child.
And like, I think that that would be a great board policy for us to adopt, those two things. Why can't we have that policy too? Because then we're beholden to an outside entity, so, I mean, I think that's very simple. You know, have a parent present, or the DA, just mirror their policy.
And this is, you know, I think it's important to make the distinction on campus. I think we make the distinction that is important on campus because engagement outside, you know, walking home is very different. So I think it's important that we have the conversation around, you know, how, if we're gonna move in that direction, how do we shape it? Because again, if a person's walking home, identifying whether or not this person is a student or an adult can get a little bit confusing.
I think on school campus, I mean, and this would just be a direction to bring back a policy we could still wordsmith. Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, as long as we keep the distinction on campus, and I think, you know, I think it's great that, yeah, that we'd align well with existing policies in other agencies, and just make sure that, you know, we're keeping up with what changes are happening in other agencies to make sure that, you know, our policy, they're reflects that or that we take whatever stance it is that the board wants on that.
And then trustee Hack, we were just kind of discussing potentially mirroring policies of other agencies, something, you know, like, oh, yeah.
I was listening to you in the background.
Okay, perfect.
You got better microphones back there, but I agree with what you guys are saying.
Okay. Do you have enough direction, superintendent, in and out, to maybe bring us back something similar to the, whatever one we just did? The, oh, notification, so similar to that, kind of, just bring us back something that we can look at and add and take away?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, cool, easy peasy. So I think similarly with this next, with this next item, item G. You probably did. Yes, it's right here, sorry, I got a couple from you, so. This is Melissa Case.
I actually agree with this, I actually would like to see it go a step further. I personally, I have kids. I wouldn't want the DA interviewing, I wouldn't want the DA interviewing my kid without me there. So I'd like to see the board take it a step further. I am pro-police, but kids are young, their brains are not developed, and they shouldn't be speaking without their, with their parents' permission. So I'd like to see you guys take it a step further. Also wanna say, I know it's police policy, but it's police-related. I think you guys should talk to the principals and the current security because I know a lot of not-healthy activity has been going on at the schools, and talk to them about bringing SROs back perhaps, for a little bit of time because they're overwhelmed, and I'm not, I'm not the type, like, I disagree with you posting that video on social media, but my first thought goes to, why is that kid acting that way? So I'd like to see some more health, mental health people because that's what, that kid's in distress, and my heart goes out to him why he's acting that way, and that should be our focus, so, just on top of that, but bring it farther. Parent present, no matter what.
I mean, and I like this idea of including safety personnel as well. Would we wanna just see what that looks like to kind of, I mean, that's not, it's law enforcement, but it's private.
I mean, I think that it could be complicated because again, so if we talk about de-escalation, I'm sorry, if we talk about student engagement, does that include de-escalation? So if a fight is about to happen, a security staff is de-escalating, does that then count as engagement with a student, with a parent non-present?
Yeah, that's true. So I think we, once we look at it, then we can kind of figure out, you know, if we need to, or if we'd like to, you know, take it a step further. So let's just start with the bones right now, and then we'll build out as we see and get more comments from the public. Okay. We good on this one?
Another speaker card, I believe, for this, is this twelve B?
Thank you so much. Mr. Mims.
First of all, you know, are all those chairs in the front row that low? I mean, you know. Anyway, I, you know, I think that you need a policy in terms of police interacting with our children. You know, and when, and if there's a need or necessary for them to have interaction, that the parent should be informed before the administration agreed to allow the police to talk to their children. Because children really don't know what their rights are. And so my concern is, you know, and also parental notification. When, anytime an officer of the law is going to, is going to conduct an interview on a child, then the parent has a right to know. And that, and that that child should not be made to sit in an office with a police officer without the parent knowing, and also agreeing to that. So that's some of the concerns that I have. Anyway, that's, thank you.
And I think that's important too, so just like, I think that's something that we can pay kind of close attention to, to make sure that, you know, I wouldn't wanna put a time necessarily and say, you know, you need to contact the parent within X amount of time, but I think there could be something that says to the degree, or something to the effect of, can't talk unless a parent was notified, you know, and it could be as, something as, I mean, just say I'm saying that it's simple. But yeah, no, I think that's a really good point, and just being more specific. Got another speaker card, Ms. Velma Wilson.
Okay, so, I go back again and say, it is super important that you all attend and at least just sit and watch what is really going on at these schools. I am not gonna give you all details, but I'm just gonna give you something because I am there, volunteering my time to support students and these educators who are under attack. Under attack. Ellie, you posted a video, that didn't help the situation. I'm out of curiosity, had you ever even thought to check in on the staff that put themselves in harm's way, got injured? Had you called Dallas Ranch to check in on the staff that danger had an insurrection from parents? Parents? No, I don't think any of y'all checked in on them. Those staff are putting themselves in harm's way, and yes, when law enforcement comes, they are in a definitely awkward position when you say stuff like, we need to make sure we're checking how these, how law enforcement is interacting with, engaging these students, especially when you have a child that is on heightened alert, and they're trying everything they can to de-escalate. Yes, thank you to the efforts of bringing more mental health counselors and more programs like ODAT onto these campuses to help support students during that time. Site safety can't do it all by themselves. These administrators can't do it all by themselves. I really want some of these folks to be super-relevant and to really know what's really happening. One or two parents isn't enough to make a decision on. When there are kids that are just, some of these kids need to rethink and relearn how to be socially interactive with each other. And they need us. They need all of us to collectively come with some ideas on what we can do to engage. It was really nice to see Michelle with STM out, when I brought out jump ropes, jumping ropes with the kids, jumping rope at middle school, jumping rope. Yes, this is now kids being kids. But this is a positive interaction, so when you start thinking about those things, think of why SROs would be so important in our schools. Because it is those connections that come with that. Human connection is real. And when, we don't want our kids to be afraid of law enforcement, we want them to be able to know that they can engage. Officer Crandall, she's another one, who came in, she made sure, she followed it, and they were, oh my God, the engagement was just phenomenal. So yes, we want positive interaction, but how are you gonna do it if you start putting barriers on them? Because y'all not there. Y'all not putting yourselves in harm's way.
All righty, so moving on to, is there any other public comments? No?
No.
Okay. So moving on to item G, which is bullying prevention policy. Now, it is getting late, so I'll just make this easy, what I was thinking. We don't have a board policy, and so bullying specifically regarding kids because it's crazy on our school sites right now. And I know that we have a lot of anti-bullying, you know, things in student handbook. We don't have a board policy specific to our own board governance. Now, I haven't checked in all of the parent section, I've checked in the student section. So what I think would be helpful, if the board agrees, is can we just, the next meeting, have any information related to bullying policies that we have? See if, and then from there, see if we need it updated? I actually think that this might be better couched as a board goal, but I just wanted to, you know, kind of see what policies we do have because I have a feeling they're in a couple different places. Plus you have ed code, plus we have student handbook, so we have a lot with it. So I kind of just wanna see, what do we have? Do we need to update anything? And if we don't need to update it, maybe we have like an attendance, you know, kind of effort, or, you know, just talk a little bit more about how we can get more supports to these schools to help with the very intense bullying that's been going on on the campuses.
If I'm understanding you correctly, the goal is to understand what policies are, oh, the goal is to understand what policies exist?
Yeah, because it's actually in a couple, it's, I, from my cursory research, I didn't do a huge deep dive, it seems like it's in a couple places. And so I just wanted to, rather than just kind of making assumptions, I just wanted to have like a list of, okay, we have it, it's in board governance, it's in students, and it's in parents, right? And if there's a little piece of it, I wanted to see the administrative regulations, which is part of board policy. And then from there, you know, do we need to update it? Or do we need to maybe have a larger conversation about maybe some type of initiative or something like that? So it's really kind of similar to what we did with the use of force, but I would like to see it personally at the next agenda meeting, if it is possible. So it's like a kind of, to discuss. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I think I have a few comments on this that, like, I think it'd be great to steer this conversation perhaps through our Wellness, Culture and Climate Committee. I think they have a lot of experience on things that touch both directly on bullying and I think related to it. Because I think, you know, and because of that team, is a lot of our staff that are, have been in the classroom and stuff. One of the thoughts I'm having with this is that policy for bullying feels to me potentially more dynamic and more maybe site-specific. So I wanna make sure that we're not potentially, you know, being too rigid in how we address bullying when it might be a little bit more site-specific, and I think having that kind of check of having that team perhaps help us out on this. If it's something that they wanna help out with, I wouldn't wanna force them to work on something that I don't think is a priority, but that's just an idea and initial thought that I had.
And also, you know, I also wanna make sure that we sort of, and aware, when we think about bullying, the potential for suspension and sort of, you know, that dynamic as well. You know, because again, learning losses happened over the last year, suspension and all those things, they could result as a result, they could come about as a result of a bullying policy. You know, so just being cognizant of all those.
I think that's really, it's very important. I don't think discipline should necessarily be even a part of it at all, and if it is, it should be something like restorative justice or something. I really, really like that idea of, if, you know, if the superintendent agrees that, to have that group, what do they call themselves? Wacko?
Wellness, Culture, Climate, yeah, I don't know what that is.
Wacko, I think it is. To have them do a little presentation or at the very least be partners in the conversation. But I still kind of think that the first step is still like, what do we have? And then to put that ask out there. But trustee Hack?
I think you covered the rule.
Okay. Does that?
I actually have compiled all of our bullying policies, so I'd be happy to just provide that in Friday board, and then if the board wants to bring it back for more discussion, we can start there.
So what, what would you need, like, if we're kind of all in agreement that maybe having our, some of our wellness folks kind of be involved in this conversation with us, what does that look like and how can, like, should I put in a motion? Or like, should I just kind of leave it, leave it like that?
I would recommend that the board start by just, I don't mean this to sound condescending in any way, but educating themselves on what exists. And then I think that will frame your next steps, of where you wanna go with this.
Perfect. So let's have bullying prevention policy be on the next agenda as an item for discussion, that and Friday board. Works for me. This next one's also mine, but because I wanna end on a more happy note, if it's okay, I'm just gonna table this, take it off, which is agenda setting. I think that now that we've kind of got our consultant, I think that, and we've, you know, obviously, had some discussion about the very next agenda setting, so I personally feel comfortable not trying to, you know, get into the weeds of this. Is that okay? Okay, yeah. Hopefully what I'm saying is making sense, but I feel like we talked too much about all this tonight, so. All righty, moving right along. So, section thirteen, resolutions for first reading, we do not have any. Item fourteen, resolutions for immediate action. We do have this resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Bay Area Quality Management District. And that would be with me? And that's Deputy Superintendent Romeo.
So I would, before you this evening, is a grant that we would ask you to adopt the resolution. It is to replace some of our high emission.
We can't?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. And this grant would be allowing for up to five buses to replace our high emission buses to zero emission, and we've been doing this over the last few years, we have two so far. We do put the money up front under this grant, and then we are reimbursed once the buses come in. But our buses are getting at a point where we do need to start replacing anyway, and to do that in a much more environmental-friendly manner is a good idea, especially when we can get reimbursement from Bay Area. So I would ask the board to approve the resolution.
I love this. The only question I have is who found this? Was it our grants?
No, we, my transportation department, both Mr. Collins and Carl Steinberg have been working regularly with Bay Area, and so every time one comes up, we put in an application. We ask the board to approve a resolution to put in an application.
I very much appreciate, this is our other questions? Is there a motion on this resolution?
I place a motion.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Rocha to approve, adopt this resolution, seconded by trustee Dr. Lewis, if Ms. Cavallaro can call our role.
Yes, trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
The motion to adopt resolution two zero two one dash two two dash two zero authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Bay Area Quality Management District to secure assistance, replacing... application to the Bay Area Quality Management District to secure assistance replacing older high, high emitting diesel buses with zero emission buses passes 5-0.
That is a title. Thank you, Ms. Cavallaro. So next up, section 15, resolutions for second reading and action. We do not have any this evening. Uh, section 16, board policies for first reading. So this is just a first reading, no action. The first one is revised board policy 5116.1, which is about intra-district, uh, open enrollment.
So before you this evening are two policies that have been revised and they're, as you said, for information only and that reflect changes in law.
Wonderful, thank you. And then, um, is there any questions on this? This is very much in the line with the, the conversations that we've had with the community. And then this one's similarly, but, uh, about inter-district. So intra is out, inter, no, inter is out, intra is in, right?
No.
One of them's out, one of them's in. So we're, this one is 5117, inter-district transfers.
Within the district.
Within, because inter, right? Uh, any questions on this one? We still, no action, so we've still got time. Okay. Uh, 17, board policies for first reading and action. We do have one, uh, and it's delete board policy 5118, Open Enrollment Act transfers.
And so as a result of change, revising the two previous policies, that requires us to delete this policy to be in line with law. So we would ask the board to prove this this evening.
Questions or a motion?
Motion.
Okay, a motion made by trustee Hack to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hernandez to, uh, adopt the deletion of this policy. Ms. Cavallaro, can you call the roll?
Uh, yes, trustee Hack?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
President Householder?
Yes.
Vice President Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Rocha?
Yes.
Uh, the motion to delete board policy 5118, Open Enrollment Act transfers passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right. Next up, 18, board policies for second reading and action. We don't have any this evening. 19, information items for general information, uh, annual developer fees for public review. I believe this is going to be our deputy superintendent.
Yes, um, each year we are required within 180 days of, uh, the closure of our books to submit to the board and to the public. It is not for action, it's just for information. The information of the revenues and the expenses that have come in against our developer fees. So that is here for your information this evening.
Any questions? No? Nope? Okay. Another informational item this evening. Okay, no, just realized I don't have any more comment cards. That's a, the scary looking around was. Um, so another just informational item, our quarterly Williams, our, our quarterly report on Williams uniform complaints. And so associate superintendent Navara.
Yes, so we're just sharing with you for information that there were no complaints received for the first quarter, um, from July through September.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Okay. Next up, delete administrative rule 5118, Open Enrollment Act transfers as presented. So I'm assuming this is because we just deleted.
Correct.
1118. And administrative rules is like how the administrators are going to carry it out. So any questions on that? No. Okay. No, okay. Uh, moving along. 20, future agenda items from board members. So I, is there any? I think trustee Rocha, you said one at the beginning and I can't remember it.
No, I, I, actually I was going along with the, uh, plan. Um, I was more into the prevent, I mean, uh, how would I say it? One of the two things that I brought up and I mentioned it, and that is that we have a listing of all the different schools and the programs that are in there so that we can be aware. And if we're asked, then we at least have an answer and we can pinpoint it because sometimes things, we approve them and they go over our head and we don't always recall. So I was asking for that. Second, and she is aware of it, is the fingertip information. I think that we should have a card of our information of our district so that we can carry it with us. And anytime that we have to give a presentation, or not present, but somebody asks you a question, you at least know how many employees you have, what's your budget, you know, the basic things. Sometimes we forget.
Just have a key card.
A key cap, yeah. And those are the two things that I was talking about. I will of course continue to support the idea of, um, interaction with parents and I'll keep looking at how we're going to be doing that. So I might come back with some ideas on that.
Okay. So, uh, I have schools and programs broken down by school site as an item for discussion and then a potential card informational quick. Okay. Uh, any for me, Dr. Lewis? I don't have any this evening. I think maybe trustee Hernandez, you have one?
Yeah, I think I mentioned all the things that I had at some point during the other parts of the agenda, so it's possible I may forget one off the top of my head. Um, but I know that, you know, in the, the further future, uh, taking a look again at our COVID policies as things change, um, I think that would be great. I also know I mentioned, um, and I know we also had a separate conversation about programs in general, but I said in the context of maybe getting ODAAC to come do a presentation if, if, you know, that's something that they want to do. Um, you know, I'd like to see that or at least offer them that opportunity. Um, and I feel like I had one more that's not coming to mind, but I will definitely email that over to, uh, president householder and the superintendent.
So, um, superintendent Anella, with the, cause I feel like ODAAC requesting that could kind of fit into our list of people we would want to present. So would you still want that to come back as an item for discussion or is that okay to just kind of add it to the general?
I, I would, and only in the sense that there are so many programs out there, I'd like to hear, and then we can have a rotation. Um, so we, not, not name them specifically, but just put on their reports of organizations' programs.
Yeah, that makes me think, do we have a comprehensive list of that? I mean, I guess that's what you're asking for. Okay. Uh, trustee Hack, sorry, I just answered my own question. We're good. Okay. Um, okay. Additional comments which exceed the first 30 minutes?
Didn't have any.
I don't think we have any. Uh, reports and comments from board members? I have nothing.
So we, trustee Rocha and I, uh, are members of the Antioch School District and City Council or City Committee. Uh, so we did hold a meeting this past, was it last week or the week before?
Last week.
It was last week. Um, and so, you know, there was a couple different conversations that came about, uh, one of which was creating, and, and trustee Rocha sort of alluded to it earlier, uh, creating some sort of way for, um, law enforcement and students to engage and sort of, sort of like a learn your rights campaign, uh, a know your rights campaign. Uh, those are fairly familiar and it's fairly straightforward where law enforcement comes in, uh, and they dialogue with kiddos around, you know, the different types of interactions and all those types of topics. Uh, so that was a conversation that happened. It seemed to be mutual interest on the part of the school district as well as the, the city. Uh, another conversation that we had was around the, um, crossing guards. Um, I don't think we came to a resolution around that.
No, we, uh, for history is that the city at one time paid the crossing guards. Then you, when they lost their money, it was shifted over to the school district. The school district at this time through us is asking the city to consider paying half of the crossing guards, uh, to help us with that support. And then we are also looking at what other schools might need crossing guards that we're not aware of. And just safety in general, there's some spaces they're already going to be working on. Delta Fair is one. Um, and there was a.
So there's a safety study.
Yeah.
Uh, that was, that's going to be conducted. I think, uh, the city's going to vote on it. I think the total cost is about $15,000. Uh, so per site, I mean, I'm sorry, the, our board and the city council, uh, would split the costs 70, $7,500 apiece. And again, that will come to the board for discussion, uh, before any decision is made. Uh, and then secondarily, there's, there's a, another safety study around, or traffic study.
A traffic study. But I think the real interesting part is that they're going to be working at Delta Fair, which is for Sutter, we started, excuse me, for Turner. And they are working at another school site that they've already committed to. Uh, it's just a conversation that we have to continue on. And of course, we were told also when we were, we were thinking of being able to, to, um, ask for overtime from their police force to come into our after-school activities, evening activities, and we were told that was impossible now, uh, whereas maybe a couple of, a month or two ago was fine with the chief, with Chief T. But now they're saying they're losing their, their police and so they can't even afford to lend us one.
Um, and then sort of, in addition to that meeting, uh, so one of the things that I've been working with is Kaiser Permanente. Uh, you know, this past year we've held, uh, or in working with their African-American, uh, group, um, you know, we've held a couple different backpack giveaways for Lone Tree Elementary as well as, um, I believe it was M&amp;O Grant, I believe. Uh, but we held two of those. And then most recently, uh, the, the folk, the representatives from Kaiser reached out about a woman, a young women's project for young, young ladies 17, I'm sorry, 12 to 17, middle and high school. Uh, where it's sort of an empowerment, uh, program where they would be mentored, uh, with professionals in, in the, um, medical field. Um, and that conversation, I believe, well, I sent that out to the principals, um, for conversation and consideration. So I believe that started this past Wednesday.
Um, and then I completely failed to mention, just because it's been so long, it's been like four weeks since we've all met. So I actually did participate in the event, the Key to the City event, um, with Isaiah Dunn, number 27, for the New York Jets. He got the highest, um, free agent contract, um, ever granted in the NFL and he is a 2017 Antioch High School graduate. So thank you for Antioch High School for hosting that event. It was really, it was just wonderful. Thank you to the city for, you know, actually doing it. Um, and I'm looking forward to more of those kind of future goodwill. I hope that, you know, in the, it was really hot that day, but I hope in the future we'll be able to see the rest of the board, uh, there. And then the only other thing is I did want to follow up with you guys on the bicycle garden. So the three community workshops have concluded. Right now, the top three, uh, frontrunners are Chichibu, Gentry Town, and Pruitt, actually. So that's kind of the community and I've just been there as kind of, you know, a face, um, helping out with the tech. And so we got a lot of really good feedback from the community and there's still a ton of opportunities to get involved. I really, um, you know, once the time comes, trustee Rocha, I think you brought up some really great things about seniors, so I definitely want to plug you into those conversations now that it's narrowed down. But if you live near any one of those parks and have any strong feelings about it being turned into a bicycle garden, please fill out the survey on the City of Antioch's website.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I would like to have some input because I don't believe Chichibu would be appropriate since we already have our sister city there. We have the Bocce there and it's very close to the school district in the playground. Uh, Pruitt Ranch is an open land. There's nothing on there, no trees, it's flat. That would be a better situation.
Yeah, the thing that they're concerned about is that disc golf.
The what?
The disc golf up on the hill. I didn't know it was there until these conversations. I'll send you all, I'll send the superintendent a link.
In the Gentry Town one.
Or just talking about Pruitt, there's a disc golf.
A disc golf?
Disc golf, it's like.
Oh, yeah.
Frisbee kind of thing.
Yeah.
Frisbee golf.
Okay, is it that close?
I, I didn't think it was that close, but.
Well, to me, it's only a place that I could see because it's flat. The other one, which is the Gentry Town one, is in a close area and is between two housing tracts. It's not, and not, there's a lot of trees.
Yeah, and the Gentry Town, I think that the thought, or at least my understanding is that they were thinking that it could brighten up that neighborhood, but then that's also really assuming.
It's too secluded. It's too secluded.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I, I, I was, I was, I've been advocating for Pruitt just because it's, it could be a hub. So, but I'll send you all the information on the next Parks and Recreation meeting so that.
I support Pruitt.
I'll, I'll tell them that too. Um, committees, reports, things to share from the last four weeks.
I'll be very quick. Um, I think I'll highlight, um, the project that I've been working on is, uh, Dozer Libby Medical High School does their e-mentorship program, which is a, a program that pairs students with someone that works in the healthcare field, uh, and they email back and forth. It's like a very quick, very, um, easy, um, way to connect students. And so I usually, you know, given my healthcare background, I usually try to help recruit some people and get, uh, people to volunteer with that. Um, in the past I've participated when I was, uh, were actively working in healthcare. I'm a student now, so I'm not quite a great fit for that, um, at this point. And then I've been trying to facilitate some, um, and strengthen some of the, the partnerships that Dozer Libby has, um, to make it easier to kind of get some of those, um, mentorships, uh, going. Um, so that's the, probably the main thing that I've been working on, um, outside of these board meetings. Um, and then I just wanted to, um, you know, just highlight that it's, it's great to be here in person and, uh, you know, thank you to all the staff and everyone that makes this possible. There's clearly like a lot of production going on here. Um, you know, like we have staff back here that are like managing our sound. We have Joe that's like making sure that all of our technology is working. Uh, so just a thank you to everyone that makes these meetings in person possible. Uh, thank you to everyone who's hung around until the very end here, uh, in our audience. I know I'm tired, so I can't imagine, uh, that you all aren't tired and to everyone, you know, my fellow colleagues here, uh, for hanging out, but I'll stop talking now so we can get out of here.
Trustee Hack?
Nothing. I can't, I can't. Do better than you.
Okay, next time. So future meetings, our next meeting is on the 10th and then on the 15th.